Good evening, everyone, and welcome to February 17, 2022 Planning Board Meeting for the Town of Poughkeepsie. I'm going to start by joining me for the pledge. Thank you. Starting to feel like spring out there. Hopefully, the flowers don't get the idea too early. First up on, we have, we're still in a hybrid meeting now, even though we have all Planning Board meetings. Planning Board members in attendance tonight, so I have to say that tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Chapter 417 of the laws of 2021, which suspends certain provisions of meeting laws to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting by video conferencing. In accordance with the law, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There's been a roll call of board members, and there's a quorum present for this meeting, and I've also confirmed with the secretary that the meeting has been duly noticed, and we fulfill our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice on the town's webpage and on the town's bulletin board. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have a confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings tonight have been properly published. Thank you. And we have six members of the board present tonight, and I'd just like to introduce a new board member we have with us tonight. It's Steve LaVassar.
I look forward to working with everybody, and thanks for the patience, as I'm a newbie.
So, welcome, Steve, and we proceed first with Vassar College faculty apartments. Welcome, David.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here representing Vassar College this evening. I would like to make a short presentation, if I may. Ken Casamento, Richard Cantor, and Phil Greeley should be allowed in.
They are. They're here.
They're all here?
Yeah, we can see them on our monitors in front of us. And we have the screen sharing have started.
So, with the letter we received from New York State DOT, there were several changes they asked us to make, and that are, that the first is, the first plan being shown on the screen is showing one of the, one of the, actually, two of the changes that are being asked for. The first is showing that the walkway, the pedestrian walkway, as it directly meets the crosswalk, DOT requested that to be 10 feet wide rather than 8 feet wide. So, it's 10 feet wide from Raymond until it reaches Watson Road. So, that's one change that was made. The second change was that they asked us to remove the landscape island. They thought it would be a negative for truck traffic and fire trucks and things like that. While they, you know, listened to us regarding the design intent and what we were trying to do, we didn't have much luck, and DOT said it needs to go, so it's gone. You'll note, if you read the letter from DOT, the other thing that they denied us on was that we wanted to make this a raised crosswalk, but they said no to that also. They did retain all of the other things that we were looking for, including the area in the middle of the refuge area that I discussed at the last meeting. Next slide. The next item was a comment from staff here, several board members and county, and that was asking for a change of the land bank parking from being head-in parking to being parallel parking. So, this plan is showing that the 20 additional parking spaces are now shown as parallel spaces along the circle of Raymond Avenue. We have negotiated and worked out a land bank parking agreement, and that would be executed with the approvals. The final item I'd like to address is that we received communication from SHPO that they wanted us to study the demolition of that house that is located at 28 Vassar Lake Drive. In discussing that with Vassar, a very quick determination was made that instead of demolishing it, given that there might be a historical nature to that house, that we relocate the house on the campus. So, we've made that commitment to the planning, the Planning Board. We've made that commitment to SHPO. SHPO has welcomed that change by us, and we will now work with them to obtain the approvals that we need to be able to relocate that house. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thanks, David, for the overview of the updates. Start with Eric for board's comments.
Excuse me. So, this application is on for a public hearing and also for consideration by the board of secret determination, and if you proceed with that, if you move forward with that, then also for site plan, potential site plan approval and architecture, excuse me, and architectural review. The board also has a proposal as part of the application to cut trees, which can probably be acted upon in any circumstances, but most likely after, if you proceed with secret, then you could consider that regardless of what you do with the rest of the application, because that's something that they're seeking action on in the next 30 minutes.
Yeah, that's coming up soon.
Mm-hmm. So, you have staff comments. The application has, was revised with this submittal to a smaller-sized development with only 40 units. They've made associated changes to the site layout. There's a number of items in the staff recommendation for your discussion, so we're requesting you take a look at those and provide feedback to the applicant and staff so that we have guidance to deal with conditions moving forward, either of deferral or of approval, including on the parking, on the recreation demand, the development, the path with trigger for the land bank parking, and a buffer waiver, among other things. You have in your packets, you received a, not only our recommendation, but also a draft of a negative declaration for you to consider with supporting EAF Parts II and III, as well as a number of items of correspondence and some additional correspondence from the applicant on traffic and on how the housing will be managed, among other things. So, that's all there for you to review. There's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot of information this afternoon that we went through, so that was good. Answered some of the questions we've had, so that's some good updates. All right, let me go to Andy. Are you satisfied with?
Sure. Eric covered a lot of it. We have a diminishing list of technical comments related to utilities and stormwater, and then one legal question that has to do with the ability to tie in the water main to the existing two-inch line on the site. I don't see that as a secret question. It can be resolved prior to site plan approval. So, that's pretty much everything.
Could that be a conditional?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Andy. See his mark on for any? Yeah, he's there.
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
Hello.
Too many little squares here.
Yes, Mark Patrol from JMC provided a review, a traffic review, as it relates to the latest submission from the applicant. My letter basically had some coronation items, as well as some technical items, and just items that they, that the state DOT had in their recent correspondence that the applicant had provided responses to and gave an overview at tonight's meeting. And then had some comments as it relates to land degree parking, which the applicant has shown and proposed the parallel parking instead, which addresses that concern as it relates to land bank parking.
All right. Thanks, Mark. All right. This time, I'll move to open the public hearing for this.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Anyone in the audience or on Zoom call wish to comment on this application tonight?
Want to be designed in there?
Just come up to the mic so you can be on the record.
Okay.
We have someone in the meeting room, so we'll start with that.
What?
Do you just like to sit?
I'm fine. I'm fine, thank you. All right. I'm a little concerned because I didn't, I couldn't totally follow, I think, what, some of what was being said. So, where, at what point are we at right now? Because I couldn't, it wasn't always clear.
It's a public hearing.
What?
It's a public hearing.
No, I mean, in terms of the project.
It's moving toward the approval phase because it's, he's answered all of our questions for the most part.
I spoke, there's, you have a document from me, I believe, and my name's Adine Wilson. I live at 27 Vassar Lake Drive.
Okay, yeah, we have your letter.
You have my letter.
Just want to make, just to make this statement, you'll make sure your comment period is three minutes for comments.
All right. I spoke the last time. I not, I have not received any information about how the traffic on our road is going to be resolved. This is a walking road besides being cars. It is narrow. Those land bank parking, the, if, I'm concerned, and the neighbors are concerned, that we don't want this moving forward until our questions have been fully answered. We do not understand what's happening in terms of the traffic. We are concerned about the design. I've expressed the concerns there, and I think that I'm a little concerned at the idea of the town board going ahead and approving this before our questions have been fully So, it's the traffic, the design of the building, and I, as I've said in there, the building is in a sliver. It's been portrayed as a large area, but it's really, truly a little sliver with a road in front, a road behind, and no space to go on either side, so that it is all a four-story, four-story building with parking all around it, and as I pointed in, out in my document to you, I'm not sure where it stands in terms of the zoning because it's been portrayed as an extension of an apartment project from the 1960s, and they are not apartments. They are single-family houses. So, the whole area is single-family houses. It's not an apartment complex, the Watsons. But in your doc, in your proposal, in the proposal that's been given to you, and I've got it quoted in there, it says that it is a, does not a zoning problem because it's a continuation of an existing project of apartments, but they're not apartments. So, there are a lot of questions still in the documents, and I'm concerned at the idea of the board, town board, simply going ahead and moving towards approval until these questions have been answered. So, how, our safety, our left-hand turn, our turns out of our, we have serious traffic questions, issues, and safety issues, and is the question of the design.
All right.
So, I couldn't really, you all were talking to each other, so maybe the people at home can hear what's being said, but it was not really clear what was being said because you were talking to each other and.
Well, we weren't, we might have been talking to each other before the meeting started about, but that was not related to this project.
But you were addressing, I mean, addressing each other, so.
Now, we're just listening to the applicant overview and what the, what the engineer says.
Okay, well, it was, it was very hard for me to tell where things stand. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Next, come on up in.
I have a question. I have a question. Why are you guys voting before taking the concerns of the citizens into account?
Hold on, hold on. We have to, we have one other person in the room that's going to speak first, and then you can take a turn.
Hi. My name's Ann Shershin. I'm the sixth ward, town councilperson. If I'm here speaking as a resident, not as the town councilperson, as the town attorney tells me I must tell you. Anyways, I've really been impressed with some of the changes on the project. The smaller size of the building, the reduction of the number of units, the footprint got smaller. Now, what I heard previously is that there was supposed to be an emergency gate across the entrance of Vassar Lake Drive, and I certainly hope that will be in there because it is correct. It is a small windy road, and they really don't want to see a large volume of traffic from, you know, 40 more units being added, being sent up and down that road. So, and that's what I heard last time, so I do hope that's in there. And also, the increased vegetation buffer between the apartments and Vassar Lake Board, that's really welcome. I thought the plan for what they were going to do for the crosswalk has been needed for years, so that's really, really welcome, and the new playground, I'm sure, will be well enjoyed. And the only concern I have left is the concern I've had all along, is the view of this building from Hooker Avenue. Even with the dormers, it is going to appear to be four stories tall, and the other commercial buildings on the road are two and a half and three stories long, so it is going to be larger than them, and it is going to stand out and be kind of looming on the street. So, anything that can be done to lower the appearance of it, to reduce the number of floors would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ann. Anyone else in the room here wish to speak on this project?
Well, yes, I would like to have my question answered. Why are you voting on issues before you take the concerns of the residents into account?
I don't, I don't see who's speaking. You have to say your name for the right.
My name is Wes, and I'm sorry, I'm a resident in Poughkeepsie, and I'm listening into your meetings, and I'm noticing that you're railroading the citizens without addressing their concerns. Why are you doing that?
If that's your only comment, and we, the project.
That's all my comment on the question, but I'd like to have an answer. Why are you voting before answering the concerns of the citizens? Why are you doing that? Can you answer that question?
Yes, the project has been here many times over the past few months, and they've made updates and changes along the way, and reduced it, et cetera, and to try to.
So, the reason why you're not taking the citizens, you're not taking our questions into consideration because the project has been around for a long time? Is that what you're saying?
No, we've said it's been around a while, and everybody has spoken, and we've asked for changes, and they've been making changes.
I see. Do you think everybody's been spoken, and you think they get considerations into account? That's fine. I understand your position. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else wish to speak on this project?
I have my hand up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I'm Neet Choudhury, and I'm a resident in the Watson apartment buildings, and I think one thing is that there are multiple opinions, so certain citizens' concerns are not equal in terms of the concerns. At first thing, I would say is I do not think of myself as living anywhere near a single-family house, but as a part of an apartment. And I just want to say that as a faculty member of Vassar College, this is much needed in terms of the community, one of, both Vassar's community, but I think also is thinking of these residents as a part of the Arlington community, that they would really contribute. And we also need updated housing, and certainly Arlington area elsewhere has happily engaged in building family homes that are not single-family homes, speaking to need. I don't see why Vassar should be exempt. You know, I think all the issues with walking and so forth can be, you know, I'm not sure of the pedestrian pathway since I've walked down that path and been always dodging cars coming up and down it, so it doesn't have a sidewalk per se to be defined as pedestrian going down Vassar Lake. So, I hope that, you know, the community can work together, but I would just argue that this is very necessary to the college, but I think it's also important, if you think broadly in terms of the neighborhood, as the neighborhood grows and changes. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your comments. I mean, part of this project is adding a new central pedestrian bike pathway through the, through the lawn area that will connect up to the improved crosswalk on Raymond Avenue.
Excuse me, that does not answer the question. I'm sorry. It does not answer the question of the safety of us on our streets. That has not been addressed. I asked the last meeting, and it's not been addressed.
We have another hand up. Mary Ann?
Yeah, thank you. My name is Mary Ann Begamon. I'm here at Vassar College, and I'd love to read, if I may, two letters that I received from faculty that could not make it to this evening's meeting. And since I have two to read, I may take a little bit longer than the three minutes allotted. Is that okay? They're both fairly short, though.
All right. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Okay, so the first one is from a faculty member named Yu Zhou. She's a professor of geography, and she lives at Old Silver Mine Place in Poughkeepsie, 12603. She's a member of the Vassar Faculty Housing Committee, and I'll read her letter word-for-word here. Faculty housing, I believe that building this faculty housing project is necessary to help the young faculty get settled in Poughkeepsie, strengthen the campus community, and support Arlington development. New faculty housing needs. Vassar has not built additional faculty housing for decades, and the fact that Williams was taken offline intensified the need for faculty housing. New faculty members generally entered the college at the age of starting young families. They typically could not afford to purchase homes, as most only finished graduate schools, and many have student debts. The rental market is extremely tight in Poughkeepsie. It's hard to find affordable rental properties for faculty or anyone else. Faculty also prefer to live near the campus to minimize commuting, as many of them work late in the evening and on weekends. Our jobs are not nine-to-five kinds. In our recruitment, faculty housing is one of the things that chairs tell the candidates to attract them to Vassar. We often compete with the best universities in the country, so housing is an important element of recruitment. Housing is also one of the most important considerations when candidates accept a job offer. When I came to Vassar more than 25 years ago, I was lucky enough to have an on-campus apartment. I cannot tell you how essential it had been to me as I came with a one-and-a-half-year-old toddler, my husband, and my visiting parents. Faculty life is a mental, particularly in the first few years, so having a campus faculty housing really helps us settle down, both physically and psychologically. I can give you an indication of how eager new faculty are with this project. We had sent out a survey about apartment sizes to junior and visiting faculty. The survey was sent on a Friday evening after the working hours. Overnight, we received responses from almost half of the entire population. You can tell how enthusiastic faculty members are about this project. I've done many surveys, and this broke the record in speed and response rate. I also believe that it should be self-evident that having a large number of young people and families in the Watson complex would be a favorable thing for the local businesses in the Arlington area. So, that was from Yu Zhou. The second letter I have to read is from Shona Tucker, who's also a member of our faculty here at Vassar. She's a member of the, and chair of the drama department, and she also, like Nita who spoke earlier, lives in the Watson apartments. So, this is Shona's letter. I am writing you as chair of the Faculty Housing Committee of Vassar College in full support of the new faculty housing project to take place on Watson Road. I have been intimately involved with this project from soup to nuts. The Faculty Housing Committee has conducted several surveys with the faculty to discern the need for the project, the location of the building, the pros and cons of traffic flow, ingress, parking, and the desires and requests for the interior structure. This process has taken well over two years. We have met with designers and contractors. We have held sessions online and in person for the faculty and neighbors that the construction will affect. We have polled junior and senior faculty about the number of units necessary, and we have listened to the administration and contractors about the wisdom of building and constructing at this date and time, and how jives with the needs of the greater Vassar and the Town of Poughkeepsie plans. And so, because we have done all this work, I stand in full support of this endeavor. Currently, I am one of the residents who are most affected by this project. I live on Watson Road and fully recognize the headaches that come with constructing an edifice of this size and the real landscaping that will take place. But plain and simply, Vassar needs the housing. I would be here to deliver this in person, but for the fact that I am teaching at this moment. I am intimately involved as a professor, as a committee member, and as a community member. I hope that you will not only okay this project, but in fact endorse it. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Shona Tucker.
All right. Thanks, Mary Ann. Is there anyone else wish to comment on the project? I see someone waving their hand. Beth? Beth? Can you unmute yourself, Beth?
I thought it was unmuted.
There you go.
My name is Beth Darlington. I'm a retired Vassar professor, and I live on Vassar Land at number 16 Vassar Lake Drive. I came to the college in 1967, taught in the English Department for a little less than half a century, and I've lived in my current home since 1995. I'll try to be brief. Plans for this project have repeatedly altered, and I don't think that the ten homeowners on Vassar Lake Drive can know what those evolving plans yet will finally produce. Dee Wilson has meticulously pointed out the problems and inconsistencies in the developer's conception of the project, and I hope all of you read her careful report. I would like to raise an almost ignored problem that she cites, which I think demands immediate attention, and as far as I can tell, maybe I'm wrong, has received none from the developer. That is the dangerous intersection of Raymond Avenue and Vassar Lake Drive. Currently, there is a sign at the exit of Chapel Road that declares left turns on Raymond Avenue are illegal. Drivers ignore the sign 75 to 80% of the time they encounter it. I've counted from my window in my house. And their left turns make all turns from Vassar Lake Drive onto Raymond Avenue extremely dangerous. Years ago, Catherine Bond Hill, Vassar's previous president, called this intersection "an accident waiting to happen." It continues to be that, and to date, we have seen no suggestions, that I'm aware of, to make it safer. Before there is any new construction in our neighborhood, and before the increase in traffic that that construction would entail, we need to see a practical plan for eliminating the hazard posed by this intersection. In reports, the developer carelessly and consistently, I don't understand this, refers to Vassar Lake Drive as Vassar Farm Road. I read the reports earlier, and I didn't know what he was talking about. If one of my students had submitted such a negligent report, I would have returned it and required resubmission. I am requesting now that before any construction is permitted to begin on this project, we will see a clear plan for avoiding the danger at the intersection of Raymond Avenue and Vassar Lake Drive so that we can avert the accident waiting to happen that President Wilson saw. Thank you. I vote to defer.
All right. Thanks, Beth. Anyone else? Looking through the Zoom list, see if any hands are raised. Or if you're on the phone, you can star six to unmute your phone and speak. Not seeing anyone trying to unmute, nor am I seeing anyone raising their hand, so I think. All right. I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes six to zero. Let's go around the boards for comments, and we may have our consultants weigh in again. We'll see how it goes. Start with Peter.
We've had two traffic consultants, one for the applicant and one for the benefit of the Planning Board. I'd like to ask each of them, in the course of their review, looking at Vassar Lake Drive, what, did you find any concerns other than what you provided for us?
Mr. Chairman, Phil Greeley, can I go first?
Yep, go ahead, Phil.
So, as part of the traffic studies that were prepared, we fully evaluated the intersection of Raymond Avenue and Vassar Lake Drive. There were several items noted in our traffic studies, which the town has reviewed, issues in terms of operation. The first is site distances. As you're exiting Vassar Lake Drive, especially during spring and summer months when vegetation is at its peak, site distance is restricted. As part of our improvement plans, we identified areas where pruning and some clearing of vegetation would be completed to improve those site distances, to improve that current situation. DOT has reviewed that and is in agreement with those modifications. In addition, the traffic movements to and from and related to some of the illegal turning movements occurring at South Gate, we've come up with additional signing to reinforce the no-left-turn exiting maneuver, and so. the no-left-turn exiting maneuver, and so that it can be, it's not only, it's now, will be enforceable based on current standards. So, in terms of traffic flow and movements at that location, we identified those. They're in our traffic study. We prepared a plan showing the areas for the site distance improvements and the additional signing. And as part of the work permit process with DOT, we'll also have to do whatever else they may go through in their final design reviews.
And who is going to be responsible for the pruning?
That would be part of our per highway work permit. So the applicant, on this project, we will be obtaining what's called the highway work permit, and that will cover all of the work along Raymond Avenue, including the crosswalk at Watson, the vegetative clearing, all of the signing, including the rapid rectangular flashing beacons which will be installed, the construction of the raised area, I call it the refuge area, in the striped median.
Mr. Greeley, I need to interrupt you, but my question really is, after the initial pruning, who will be responsible for the pruning? I'm assuming there's mostly deciduous plants or trees. Who's going to be responsible in the future for the pruning?
That could be part of the permit conditions, that we would be responsible. We've identified the area.
When you say "we," who exactly is "we"?
The applicant.
The applicant, okay. So I think we should make that a condition of approval, certainly, because next year, a lot of that vegetation will grow back. So we want to make certain going forward that someone is going to accept the responsibility for keeping that area clear.
Yep, I see Eric taking a note there, so that'll be on the approval of conditions.
We've done easements for that purpose in the past. So we could certainly...
Yeah, we've done site distance easements, so we could, which obligates the applicant to do it, and then gives the town the ability to do it if need be, and then charge the applicant back. So we could do that for here as well. We can work that out with the lawyers.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Vassar College will have no problem with that condition.
All right. And thanks, Phil, if that's all you have. And then Mark, we wanted to hear from your two, your take of it.
Yeah, so in addition to what Mr. Greeley has stated, everything that he has stated is in the documents as far as what they're providing there. Just in addition to that, just so you're aware, the peak hour traffic volumes for this development, based on Institute of Transportation Engineers data, it is projected to have a peak hour traffic of between 34 and 38 trips during the peak hour in the AM and PM. I believe actually the PM is 38, the AM is 35. But it is anticipated that there'll be fewer vehicle trips with this particular development just because of the relationship of the faculty housing and the college there. So it's anticipated there'll be more walking trips, especially during the warmer months for the faculty during those hours. So, you know, roughly, you're looking at one trip every one and a half to two minutes during the peak hours there. So that's just some additional backup information for as far as what's the anticipated traffic generation for this type of development here. And again, yes, Raymond Avenue, since it's under the jurisdiction of the New York State DOT, they also had a hand in reviewing this application from the perspective of the intersections along Raymond Avenue with Watson Road, but also with Vassar Lake.
Okay, my other question would be, to what extent would the applicant accept responsibility for policing that left turn off of Chapel Road? Because I agree, that is, it's pretty dicey. Other than the signage, you're going to provide additional signage, but...
I don't understand how Vassar could police a New York State right-of-way.
The sign is on Vassar property. If it's the sign that I'm thinking of, the one by the chapel...
Right, but we don't have any, Vassar does not have any police ability to stop a car, to ticket them, to do anything like that. That would be the responsibility of the town and the state police.
Okay.
Yep, I mean, if it does become an issue, that would have to be...
So maybe we can bring it to the attention of the town of Poughkeepsie Police and ask them to begin to take a harder look at it?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, this is what we've been hearing for a couple of meetings, that this is an issue here, so...
Yep, I agree. I will discuss it with them.
Okay. They've done that before. We'll stake out a place and...
And also, the signing will be brought up to current standards, so that it's fully enforceable. That's one of the issues there today.
Okay, it's not an official sign, you're saying?
Doesn't meet current standards.
Okay, right. Thanks, Phil.
I just wanted to reassure Mr. Rubenstein and Mrs. Wilson, you know, that these are weighted decisions. We are not steamrolling here. We've been looking at this material for months.
Right.
We've had two different traffic consultants look at it. We try to make decisions based on the best information that we have available, and that's the best we can do.
Phil, you only addressed that turn. That's another, there are two issues with the traffic.
All right. Otherwise, I think all the boxes have been checked.
All right, thanks, Peter. Yep, we'll go around the board.
Mr. Chairman, one other item that's, you know, not traffic-related, but under the purview of New York State DOT, as part of our permits, we are obtaining what's called a use and occupancy permit along Hooker Avenue to provide some additional plantings. I think that was a question that may have been raised at the last meeting, as well as, I think, tonight, the second or third speaker. So there will be additional plantings on Vassar's property, but also within the New York State DOT right-of-way that opens up and is pretty wide in that area, and it's part of a permit, so that will allow the plant within the state right-of-way to provide additional screening.
Okay, yes, I did see that on the landscape plan, so I was happy to see that. All right, we go to Ben, next, comments.
Yes, I just want to say, this project has come a long way. It's developed, it's changed, a lot of requests were made, and the applicant made a lot of changes, a lot of accommodations. There were many safety concerns, which have all been addressed, and I think it's okay now. I don't have any further comment.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Ben. Nicole?
I think a lot of questions have been answered. There's just two of them that are kind of still swirling in my mind. One is a concern that our councilwomen have brought up about the massing of this particular project. It looks great, however, she does bring up a good point, that it looks like a four-story building, as opposed to some of the other buildings on this street that are two and three-story. So I know that we've already kind of gone through this, but I just wanted to bring it up again.
Yep, I mean, it was, it was, you know, a larger building initially, and it's been shrunk.
And it was more boxy, too. You did do some dorming and stuff like that to make it look a little bit more like some of the other buildings on the street, but it's still, still there. It's still a little bit of a concern.
All right.
And then the other one is...
I mean, we could get to that when we look at architecture as well.
Sure. The other one, though, that makes me also think is the fact of the traffic on these two roads, on Watson and on Lakeview Drive. Now, we think, we think that most of the people that will be moving in here will be faculty members, possibly younger. We don't think there's going to be a lot of school-aged children. However, you heard what they said, there are people that are walking on this road that have a safety concern.
Yep.
And so, we need to talk about that.
It was a requirement that it's faculty-only in this building, just to be clear.
Do you mean, I can't, what did you say?
It's a requirement that only faculty can move in this building. It's not open to town, not open to town residents.
But that doesn't mean that faculty members won't have children.
Oh, yes, that's for sure.
Okay, yeah.
Hence, hence there's a playground as well.
Right.
Being added.
Right.
Nicole, if I may respond to your second point.
Sure, absolutely.
So, I think what's missed in the conversation is that this is not a street that's, I mean, while it's open to the public...
Right.
It's private land, and I've visited the site now probably 20, 30 times. I can't tell you, maybe a handful of cars have passed me by when I've been on the site.
Right, but the building is a building.
I understand that. I understand that. What I'm saying, the occupants are 100% faculty. They have respect for other faculty.
Yes.
They're not going to be speeding down the road. I've never observed that in this area, and we've had several people talk today that they don't see this as a problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else, okay? Rocco?
Just as a follow-on to what Nicole said here, is there anyone, Mr. Kaminsky, who's here from Vassar? Because I've got a very specific question for them.
So, Mary Ann Begaman, who's the dean of Strategic Affairs, is on the Zoom call, and if you have a question for her?
If I can incur this question.
Absolutely.
Is there a process by which the faculty residents there can grieve their complaints to Vassar and get a response? Because I'm, 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 I might get another sense here that they're coming and they're venting here, and they should be venting to Vassar Administration, because it is their property, they own it, and they should be taking care of the safety and of their residents.
So, I think the question about whether there's been participation from the Vassar faculty broadly and from the residents close by specifically, yes, there have been multiple opportunities for conversation with the residents of the Watsons, as well as Vassar Lake Drive, and we have a smaller committee that has been formed with representatives from both neighborhoods.
All right, may I please interrupt you? That was not really my question. My question is, is there a process where the residents in general can grieve any complaint they have to Vassar Administration? Not specific to this project?
Sure.
Okay, has that occurred to your knowledge?
Yes.
Has that occurred to your knowledge, and you've responded accordingly?
I have responded to many questions about this project and other projects specifically.
No, I'm not talking about this project. I'm talking about in general. Can they grieve their complaints to Vassar? Because apparently this particular person has had a safety concern for not just now, but ongoing. That's why I'm asking the question.
Yes, for concerns that residents have, whether it's in faculty housing or elsewhere, there are mechanisms, there's committees, and there's individuals that they can go to if they have issues to grieve their concerns, yes.
Okay, have you heard of this concern prior to this evening?
Oh, safety on Vassar Lake Drive?
Yes.
Yes.
And also Watson. And you've responded accordingly to the residents?
The responses about Vassar Lake Drive have been what you've heard today. That was developed in collaboration with the college.
Again, I'm not talking about this project, but apparently the concerns about Watson Road have been there longer than, since the inception of this...
Rocco, can I just interrupt for one second? I'm thinking, so, I mean, right now, Vassar Lake Drive and Watson obviously don't have a lot of traffic, because the building hasn't been built, and, you know, it's, we talked tonight about how much additional traffic will be added. It's not that significant, but...
Right.
But I think your question might be more along the lines of something like the intersection at Vassar Lake Drive and the exit across the street there where people are making left turns that are not supposed to. I mean, that seems like something that has been an issue for a while.
Right, but that's why, but I think, I'm trying to separate what has been an ongoing issue in this project.
So if someone had a concern about that, how would they bring that to Vassar?
Right, right, right. That was my question. And then, if there is a mechanism, and if they have responded, then I think you've got a grievance with Vassar itself that you need to pursue further.
I would also tell you, Rocco, that, you know, in hearing the concerns of the neighbors in the many meetings we've had, we brought those to the attention with the top people in New York State DOT just a little while ago, and we had those conversations. We pointed out the concerns with those two driveways. They're working on a major plan to improve that entire area, and we hope that comes forward. If it does, I think it'll change everything there. But we have brought it to the attention of DOT, who's ultimately responsible for making sure that things are safe on that road.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, your question is absolutely right.
I'm, I'm, I mean, you've had your...
It's a question that's absolutely right.
May I interrupt you?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. May I interrupt you, please?
It is now that they're talking about it, and they've been talking for a decade.
The dean, okay, we've understood, you've had your side, now we have, we're trying to discuss it and figure out the answers.
I'm trying to separate this project from your concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I'm focused on this project. And it's a great project, in my opinion, even though I do sympathize with your concerns.
I like the idea of faculty housing. I'm not against it.
That's all I have. Thank you, Carl.
All right, thanks, Rocco. And we, I know, Steve, you haven't seen this project too many times, since it's your first day, but if you have any comments on it.
I do have one comment, and it's more of a question. I very much appreciate the walkway that leads out to Raymond Avenue, but the question I have was, was any consideration given of putting a crosswalk between Orchard Lane and Vassar Lake Drive? Because I think what I've heard tonight is some of the concerns is pedestrian traffic through there, and they would tend to walk the road, but if they had a path through the playground and then not only one crossing at Raymond Avenue, but a short pathway over to Vassar Lake Drive, then they would have a pedestrian pass, two of them, that gets them to the main campus, and they wouldn't have to use the driving space. Was any consideration given?
No, sir. There was no consideration given to that. We didn't think that was necessary. I would say that we'd have to approach, while Vassar owns all the land, the leaseholders actually own their buildings there and have control over those properties, so we'd have to see if someone would be willing to allow a path through their backyard. I'm not so sure that that's going to happen, but I, personally, I don't see the need for that because of the pathway we have created that comes off of that roadway.
Just one point, the pathway I was talking about would be right almost on Raymond Avenue, almost like the crosswalk you have on the other side, just between those two streets. So I think that's still public.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're saying along Raymond Avenue, another sidewalk. Well, that's part of the DOT plan. DOT would not want us, I don't think, at this point, to put something in when it's a part of a larger plan that they're looking at for the improvement of Raymond Avenue from the main Vassar entrance right now, where the circle is, down to the intersection of, where Vassar Farm, Raymond, and Hooker come together.
I mean, yeah, they, DOT, you know, went to those meetings when they were creating those roundabouts, and DOT had a plan for all that at the time with the roundabout at Vassar Farm, but they did not have enough money to complete that entire project at the time, so...
The plan that we have seen is a major improvement along Raymond, with sidewalks on both sides, major islands, just like Raymond looks like north of the circle now.
Yep, that was...
That'll continue all the way down.
So, it sounds like they're revamping those old plans, and that would be, that would be good to see. It's difficult turning into the Vassar Farm, as it is sometimes, as well. All right, and I think most everything's been discussed here. The, I mean, I think the county was suggesting the 10-foot wide path as well, but we went from six to eight feet, and I put a tape measure on the floor and verified myself, eight feet looks sufficient for, for, it's not a rail trail where you're going to have hundreds of people...
Right.
Walking on it. It's a, and you did widen it toward the road, and you confirmed it's only for faculty. We took a close look at the recreational fees, and I think the board is in agree- We took a close look at the recreational fees, and I think the board is in agreement at this point. Speak up if you're not, that you have so much recreation land and you're building the, you know, anybody can use the Vassar as public space, and you're using the playground and half-court there as well. Does anybody think otherwise, that we should not waive the rec fees of this project? All right? I think that's where we're at as a board for there. Thank you for that detailed parking analysis of the Watsons, because I, you know, I do think you won't need that land bank parking as it is, and so I think that will not be an issue, but it's good to have it in there just in case. What do we have in here? Is there anything, Eric, for a trigger for the land bank parking, if it is such needed? I know you had land bank parking on one of your projects down Neptune Road that you wound up building out.
So, there's a separate legal agreement that, I think there's a draft going between our attorneys that would cover the land bank parking and what the triggers will be. Is there something you want to add to what you're looking for? I mean, what the timeframe is, or?
I don't think it's a matter of a timeframe, it's a matter of whether, you know, if the parking becomes congested at what point, you know, what percentage of strife do, does it have to happen?
So, right now, I don't think it's a mathematical calculation in any way. I think it's more left to, if the town feels that there's inadequate parking, then they have the ability to trigger it, and if Vassar feels that there's inadequate parking, they have the ability to come to the town. So, it's more practical than saying, you know, if, trying to come up with some mathematical calculation for it.
Yeah, I think, and Vassar will hear from the residents there if it becomes an issue as well. I mean, you put the parallel parking in there as well, but is there a way we can have either-or for a land bank situation? What do board members think of the parallel parking versus the straight-in? Because the residents have to walk a long distance if that ever came to pass with parallel parking, is my thought.
Yeah, I have the same thoughts. However, as far as the parallel parking is concerned, it tends to be a better option.
Okay. Safer than trying to back out onto the road, I guess.
Well, yeah, when we're already talking about traffic concerns and safety concerns on that road.
Yep. Okay, so, we're, so, everybody's good with the parallel parking for a land bank, it looks like? Just wanted to make, clarify that, because we've had it both ways. And I think that's it from what...
All right. See ya. First time. I move that the planning board find that a structural case does not exist to require the reservation of parkland for recreation purposes, because the planning board concurs with the applicant's analysis, indicating that the proposed onsite recreational facilities, including a playground, basketball half-court, shared pedestrian bike path, and passive recreational lawn area, and Vassar College Campus recreational facilities, which are available to the proposed project residential population, including Brower Lane, athletic fields, Vassar Golf Course, Walker Field House, and Athletic and Fitness Center, Vassar Tennis Courts, and Whiffhiner School Playgrounds, that total seventy-seven point five-two acres, as well as pedestrian paths and passive recreational lawn areas, will meet the park and recreational demand generated by the proposed residential project of four apartment units, seventy-four building bedrooms of solely faculty housing, which would otherwise require a land reservation of fifty-two thousand square feet, one point one nine acre, in accordance with Town Code two-ten-nine-three, and that the project's recreational demand upon town recreational facilities would be negligible.
Second. Moved and seconded. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board, as lead agency, adopt the seeker negative declaration for the Vassar College Faculty Apartment Project, as set forth in document prepared by council and staff.
Second.
Moved and seconded for seeker. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Vassar College Faculty Apartment Site Plan application subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to, one through, are we adding twelve?
Yes.
And twelve site distance easement.
And thirteen, the letter of resolution from OPRHK.
Yep.
And thirteen, the letter of resolution.
And we're covered with the notes Eric took on Peter's concern with the pruning and...
That's covered by the site distance.
Covered by eleven, and it's covered, oh, right, as well as comments from the board on eleven. And I think that's it.
Okay, second.
Moved and seconded for conditional. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, you prepared to do some architectural?
There's one more.
Tree cutting request?
Yep.
Oh, shoot, okay, yes.
We shall do that.
I move the planning board approve site tree felling activity consistent with approved BAT mitigation prior to an approved site plan, espes, espes, yeah.
It's Bresley.
Bresley, subject to the following. Tree felling activity may commence prior to March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and thereafter is prohibited between March thirty-first and October first, in accordance with New York State D N C Guides. Prior to chairman's signature of an approved site plan, site clearing activity is restricted to tree felling only. Such activity shall not include relocation or removal of trees or brush, the use of heavy equipment, or any rounded store bits. Such tree felling activity shall be restricted to the subject site as shown on demolition plan D M one revised and dated one twenty-four twenty-two. Off-site activities proposed by the site plan shall not commence prior to plan signature by the chairman. Prior to the commencement of any tree felling activity, a site restoration agreement shall be executed, subject to town legal approval and a financial guarantee filed for such restoration, in an amount to be approved by the town engineer and the director of the school development.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for tree felling activity. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Yeah, there's not that many trees to begin with that you have to take down, I don't believe, and your landscape plan is putting a lot back, so appreciate that full-flush landscape plan. And we'll talk about that with architecture, I'm sure.
May I have Don Petroncola? Please come up.
Good evening. My name is Don Petroncola with Liskom McCormick Van Vors Architects here in Poughkeepsie. We've developed a series of exterior renderings of the building, both with trees removed so that you can see the building more clearly, and then with the actual landscaping shown with a ten-year growth exposure there. The first rendering here is from the campus side, what is essentially behind the building from Hooker. The intent is that we're, you know, you're familiar, we're building up a berm here around the building. We, the, we've got a consistent gable eve around the building, then we create shed dormers at various locations, so the roof level, that top level, is miscellaneous units where we can get those dormers in, so we don't have a full area here. We're utilizing a dark gray hardy siding, eight-inch wide clappard for our field, and the dormers are being done in a panelized version of hardy siding, little recess panels and battens in a lighter gray to help offset that. Our facias are being done in a medium green, the standing seam metal roofs on top of the shed roofs will be in that medium gray as well. The roof shingle is a GAF Timberline Dimensional Architectural Shingle in a charcoal color. The windows are black, aluminum clad. So, this is the rear side, this is the rear side with full landscaping. The moving over, this is the view of the building from the walkway at Hooker, where you're coming across that walk. This is the main entrance to the building here, which is stair tower. Again, similar, the building is similar in design all the way around, the dark and the light, breaking that up in, with landscaping. We are screening that, you know, fairly well with some very nice landscaping around that perimeter. We've got a little flat canopy over the main entrance. Call yourself attention to that. The board has requested a rendering further down Hooker, looking back at the building, and that is our new rendering here, looking at the end of the building. So, you can see that, you know, the building does have a fairly strong presence that is without, with all the trees removed. This is with the landscaping.
That's from the Vassar Farm area?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is the view that was requested by the board. So, this does look rather stark with the growth of trees here. Again, ten-year projection begins to screen a great deal of that, of that building. Material-wise...
Right here.
Thank you. Okay, so, we are trying to utilize a residential palette of materials, but high-end. We're going with James Hardy, I'm sure you're all familiar with that. Clappard siding, eight-inch. Clappard is the darker panel here that is in evening blue, which is dark gray, but it's got a nice blue tone to it, so it gives a little bit more character. The lighter gray is here. The rendering showed a bit stark. You can see in the actual color, they're a little bit more compatible, a little bit more subdued. The medium gray for our facias and our standing seam roofs is down here, and this is a charcoal GAF Timberline roof. Questions?
All right. Chime in, anybody that has issues with architecture?
Generally, we discourage warehouse ends, I call them. At the end of that building, is that the, would be the southern elevation?
Yes, that's correct.
And the internal side of that exterior wall there, is that a hallway, or are there apartments on the other side of that?
These, this, this end of the building you're referring to here?
Yes.
These are all apartments. On the ground floor, we've actually got communal, community space. Then we've got, there's an entrance on that level down here. You see the doors? These are actually units here, and only on the third floor, where we don't have a dormer on the end. Do we provide a window so that the internal corridor gets some natural light?
I think it's hard to see from here. There's windows on the end of the building there.
Are there windows? I mean, I can't see from here.
Yeah, bring it over there.
Oh, great, okay, answers my question.
Yeah, it's not a blank facade.
Thought that's where you were going, Peter.
Yeah, you were worried about it, but just solid.
The angle we're seeing from the board, it just looks like one big flat block.
You should also have building elevations in your package, which will, or just black and white should make that a little more clear.
Yep, have that.
All right, any other comments on architecture?
Yeah, how far back is that from Hooker? And I'm thinking above the car headlights coming on the block.
Well, this is, this is the edge of the road.
Right, I know that, but I mean, the end of that building.
I don't know that off the top of my head. Ken, would you be available to let us know how many feet the end of the building is off of Hooker?
Give me one second, I'll pull it up.
Okay. There's some topography there, too, I think.
Right, and then I've got one other question.
With the headlights.
Well, while Ken is pulling that information up, what's your second question?
The size of the trees, can you speed up the ten-year growth out? Well, I know.
We've actually made all the trees smaller so that it didn't...
Taller trees to start with.
I wouldn't...
You can only buy a certain-sized tree, actually, so.
I'm sorry?
We can only buy a certain-sized tree. You can't purchase thirty-foot-tall trees, man.
Right, but maybe another thing that might reduce that time spent a little bit, a couple of inches taller, maybe, to start with?
I would mention, if you look at the landscaping plan, a lot of time and effort was put into looking at how we protect the building from Hooker, and there's like a whole hedge that goes down, and then there's other materials, and then the trees in addition to that. We can certainly look at the caliper of the tree, and if we can, we can size them up, we certainly will.
It looks great when it's grown up.
Yes.
I'm just trying to see if there's maybe something they could...
Well, many people come in, they'll show you trees that are twenty years old on these plans, like we did the first time, and somebody mentioned it, and that's why I said, let's show trees more in relation to the first couple of years of growth.
Right.
I mean, I appreciate that you got a landscape architect involved in this.
And he did, actually did a good job, I think, and the trees generally are between six and eight feet in height.
Yep.
You know, which is a good start.
Thank you.
David, the building from Hooker to the edge of the building is approximately eighty-nine feet.
That's pretty far.
It's pretty good conditions.
All right, thank you, Ken.
Yep. The property line is closer, but from the edge of the pavement, it's eighty-nine.
I was really only concerned about would the residents have constant headlights in their, but I think that far out, the light would be diminished quite a bit.
And I can call up if you'd like to show on the screen the landscaping plan real quick, too, if you'd want it.
No, the landscaping looks good. I was just trying to see if we could maybe speed it up a little bit, that's all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. And the other comments on architecture? Yeah, it does look, it is going to look large at the beginning until that landscaping comes in, as we discussed, but that's the same with any project we have in the town in Poughkeepsie, so.
It's a box now.
It's the way, the way we have to let Mother Nature do its thing. You try to plant something that's too big, it won't survive, so that's another issue. But David's going to be out there watering it every year.
It'll be irrigated, don't worry.
All right. I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
May I just say, I want to thank this board for the time and effort all of you have put into it. All your comments were very respected, and again, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, David. Good luck with it. Lot of conditions to go through. Next up is Hudson Heritage Updates, amending this phase-one site plan. Let's see, Kyle, who else is, who's on there?
Good evening, chairman, everyone. I believe Marty's on, and he was going to kick us off, so I'll hand it off to him.
All right. Marty, I see you're on the Zoom, but you're muted.
I'm on a dial-in as well. Can you, can you hear me on my dial-in?
Yeah, we hear you.
We hear you loud and clear now, so, go ahead.
You're with me.
And FYI, David Cooper's on as well for us.
Okay, great.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was dialing in on a cell phone, and apparently you couldn't hear me. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, thank you, thank you for meeting with us this evening. As you know, the purpose of the, to middle was firstly to alert the planning board to a variety of updates and minor shifts and changes to the, that are contemplated in the underlying uses of the master plan, development master plan. In summary, I think that the development master plan gave us general flexibility to do all that we anticipated doing, but now that we're getting down to the particulars of understanding market and developer and user needs, there's some push and pulls and moves and tugs that we need to make. As an example, is shifting multifamily units from one proposed north to the proposed south, and a different utilization of the administration building. We contemplated it being a hotel, and now it looks like it's going to be multifamily, fifty-five and older, senior housing, so we're planning to put the hotel elsewhere. So, in summary, we, I know we had a call with the powers that be and call you included to walk through the changes, and we can certainly give you, if you'd like, an indication of what they are and walk through them. The second part of the presentation tonight was the amended site plan for phase one, the commercial. There's no... There's no material modifications there, but Kyle was charged with the mission of identifying all of the minor construction related changes, modifications that have been implemented with the town's permissions and with CPL's approval and inspection. But now it comes time to document that for the record. And in the second or the third part, or second part of Kyle's presentation will be tweaks and modifications to the commercial site plan, which are consistent with things that we've all discussed in the past at the planning board level as well as the field level. So if you'd like, Chairman, with your permission, I think it might make sense just to touch base on the, on Eric's or the planning department's proposal tonight. Because I think the proposed action kind of is an outline of how I can manage to present to you some of the initial thinking and answer questions in regard to the first section being the development master plan in Secra and the second being the subdivision and perhaps talk a little bit about the site plan. Or if you prefer, Kyle can walk through all of the changes and then in, then we can review the planning department's recommendation, whichever you prefer, Chairman.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to walk through every little one because, you know, it was great that you bubbled them all on the map. I mean, if you can just touch on some of the big ones like what happened to the drive-throughs and such like that.
Kyle, I'll turn that over to you.
Right, okay. So do I have access to share my screen or can I have that?
You do.
If not, okay. Let me see here. All right, let me know when you see that.
It's here.
Okay. So I'm going to go through each sheet and I'm just going to skip to the, kind of the main points, the main highlights. So on the title sheet, and we'll obviously go through this on another sheet, but the bulk table was updated. So we'll talk about that when we get to the subdivision, which shows the lot four and 17. So here it is. One of the big changes was that lot 17 is currently part of lot four. Lot four being the ShopRite parcel. The commercial plaza east of Winsel Gate Road, which is plan, you know, as the plan is shown, it's above on top of Winsel Gate Road. Yeah, Marty can talk to more about, about that, but it's essentially just so that the commercial plaza, the entity is not managing the landfill. It will have its own separate entity that is, you know, set up to, to handle that type of responsibility. From the, one of the main changes here, sorry, keep zooming. The county DPW is well underway with their rail trail project that comes up from the south behind the Home Depot Plaza next door. It comes up to the east side of ShopRite behind Hudson Heritage and then comes on to Hudson Heritage Property with the, the goal of connecting that portion of the rail trail down to Quiet Cove Park, which is here at the north end, the north entrance, I should say, of our project. So they've been going through the design process, they reached out to us, we had a site meeting last, last fall. And we talked about the southern connection that was added behind ShopRite and also what was going to take place up in the north. If you'll recall, and actually I have it here, so let me just switch to the former amended site plan. There was a connection from that northern stub of, of the county rail trail and it came down through between lots six and one. But that was a five foot wide trail. It was really only intended for pedestrians, not necessarily bikers. You know, the county envisions this, let me just bring up the topography, which will give you a better idea. Yeah, so the county's really envisioning this being more of a bike trail. I mean pedestrians as well, of course, but a lot of bike usage, but they've seen a lot of their rail trails. So for that reason, they requested a 12 foot wide trail. Because of the topography, you can see on either side of it, it's, it's pretty steep. You know, there's room for the grading itself, but you also don't want to put this trail on the edge of a cliff. This is essentially with, you know, bikers, you know, going pretty quickly. So it's a bit of a safety concern in addition to the constructability concern. You can see, you know, I apologize for the brake line of where that match line is. But you can see between lot six and lot one, there's, there's a retaining wall there, there's steep slopes, there's just really not much room for a wider path. So the discussion with the county became, you know, how do we get people, including bikes, down to Quiet Cove Park? So what was discussed with them was taking this, this stub away. But then widening the remainder connection going up to Pinchup Road and then down through, there's a bike trail not going through the great lawn, which is part of phase two. So it's, you know, the details are to be sorted with the phase two site plan, but we did look at the existing topography, which is going to mimic the future topography in the great lawn. And we looked at, you know, how steep it is and what length we would need. So this, this meandering trail is, is a pretty good indication of what that's going to look like. Also, no, you know, this is a pretty long route to get from point A to point B. We were hoping, we're anticipating that when we do come in front of the town for phase two, that we'll be able to shorten that length since, you know, since now we know that is the, the primary connection point. You know, what's shown here is, is just utilizing what was previously approved with the development master plan. That's why it's, that's this, you know, roundabout route. But ultimately, that's, you know, that's the long and short of it is, is getting a 12 foot wide path from that county connection down to Quiet Cove Park.
That gives residents at the top to access everything too.
Correct, yes, it was not only just for people coming from the rail trail, it's everyone up in phase two essentially. And then phase one, they can come through Winsel Gate Road and also join up with that, that same path.
Kyle, excuse me, the other reason for the, the other reason for the change was to have it be on a public road as quickly as possible.
Right, yes, that was part of the discussion as well. Some of the other options thrown out were, discussed were, you know, coming through, through the commercial development, which we do have as one option. But the county wanted to get to a, you know, a main road, a town road specifically preferred as soon as possible.
What else?
So somewhat related, but not, not entirely because it's not really the rail trail. But there was also, you'll recall, let me bring that up as well. The gazebo up on top of the hill here with one, two, three, four, five sets of, seven sets of stairs. You know, this, this is something that was on the plan originally. You know, it's at the top of a high point of grading, so makes sense from that standpoint. But it's, the more we look at it, the less sense it makes from a couple of different standpoints. First, you know, first being that having this here limits the grading that we can do. It requires this very large retaining wall at lot two. The seven staircases alone specifically in the winter, but early year round is a, it's a maintenance and upkeep concern, safety concern. And the, honestly, if you, if you come out to the site, this portion of the site is pretty loud with Route nine. You know, everyone's going through here at 50 miles an hour. That's pretty much all you hear. So it's, it's, you know, even from a constructability standpoint, or putting constructability aside, I should say. It's, you know, it's not as advantageous to have a gazebo in this location as originally thought. So we removed the gazebo and, and that has allowed us to, like I said, remove this retaining wall, grade that out with a more gradual grading. Let me bring that up.
That'll probably look better too. You might want to consider where, you know, where similar amenity can go on the, on the site.
Yeah, so I did see that within the comments. So Marty and I will discuss what we think for, for providing alternatives for that. Here you can see the grading kind of wraps around more uniformly around Winsel Gate Road. Sorry, Hudson Heritage Drive. And then the stormwater pond is also reconfigured to fit into that overall grading change. So that is the gazebo. Let me just go back. And start from where I was. These sheets really nothing here, I mean, for CPL will look at this, but it's just truck maneuvering plans that were updated based on, based on the other changes we discussed, sections that have changed for the same reasons. The central Hudson pad was a separate submission altogether. It's just clouded here because it's now, you know, part of this overall amended site plan where we're, we're getting all these pieces that have been revised through construction and we're, you know, we're putting that, getting them all in the same place so we don't have to keep looking through construction sketches. So let's discuss, I skipped over the site plan.
Drive-through disappeared, I think.
There we go. Yeah, so let me talk about those. So the, and actually before I talk about those, a lot of these other clouds, I'm going to skip because it's for the same reason. They're just construction sketches that were on here to memorialize them. So they're clouded and they're, you know, part of that cover letter that we provided summarizing, but they're not, not new changes essentially. So start at building D. Originally was a, the same shape, size and shape of many pedestrian amenity area, open space area. The, one of the tenants at building D is looking for their restaurant, they're looking for outdoor dining, like a lot of, you know, the, the restaurant tenants are. So we, we added a, an outdoor dining area here, which actually has changed since this was done. So one of the other tenants in building B didn't like the idea of having their whole window here, someone else's dining essentially. So it was more, we were providing more dining than they actually needed. So this has actually been pushed back towards building D to allow that other tenant to have more of their window real estate, you know, opened. So that you will see with our next submission, just FYI. But this is still the same. So we, we previously had seat walls in front of building D in this courtyard. It was a rectangular shape with a planter in the middle. So now instead of that, it is one double sided seat wall and then the planter is actually to the side of that with another seat wall kind of wrapping around it. So like I said, it's the same area, but it's been reconfigured to, to allow for one of the tenants to have outdoor dining there, still for, you know, public pedestrian use. Along there. So then go down to building D. And again, there's actually, this has actually changed a little bit as well. So what was done here was building L previously had a drive-through in the back. And that, this was a one-way driveline because with the drive-through there, having the two-way was, was a bit of a conflict. So that drive-through has been moved over to building I, which we'll talk about next. This went back to being a two, two-way access road. The building itself without the drive-through was able to shift down towards or away from Winsel Gate Road, which allowed for a bigger open space area there. Building has moved about 15 feet, it is actually moving about five feet back from where it came because we had eliminated this bump out along with the drive-through. And it turns out the, that tenant had actually already done their floor plan with that bump out even without the drive-through needed, so. So that is shifting back a little bit, but still a larger open space area than what was approved previously. They also are changing their patio area a little bit. They're going to be going for a liquor license, so that patio needs to have certain, and needs to be connected to the building essentially instead of being separated the way it's currently shown. So working with them through that, that should be in our next submission as well as the final patio layout for building L. Like I said, this open space area essentially remains unchanged, except it's been stretched. So 15 feet shown here from what was approved, it'll go about five feet back, so you know, net 10 feet larger area there. Not much else done there.
Building I then, what's the?
Yeah, so building I was previously not a restaurant, it's now a restaurant with a drive-through. We added a curb cut here, but we made it one-way. We didn't want to add any curb cuts where you're going to have additional cars going out onto Winsel Gate Road. But we do for accessibility and circulation wise with the drive-through, just it works much better to have a, a new, you know, access point from Winsel Gate Road so that they can have their drive-through kind of wrapping around the building here. Again, the egress, we didn't want coming out to Winsel Gate Road, so we have it coming out to this, this access drive here. This tenant, we're also still working with, one thing I would like the board's feedback on is that they have asked, requested a bypass lane between the patio would stay with the building and the bypass lane would go between Winsel Gate Road and that patio area. One thing they're, the reason they're asking for that is actually one of the things that we're hearing from Burger King that they don't like is that if someone gets at the pickup window and, you know, something's not ready and they say, all right, go wait, go wait and we'll bring it out to you. At Burger King, there's nowhere to do that. They have to come back out of Winsel Gate Road and then, well, currently they just sit here because there's no, there's no one else open here. But in the future, they'll have to wrap around into the Burger King lot again and park. So the alternative is that if you have a bypass lane and they can just circle back without going back onto Winsel Gate Road. So, you know, the downside of course is that you don't have a direct connection to your patio area or the, the door from Winsel Gate. So it's, it's a bit of a trade-off there. So looking for the board's direction on that and what their thoughts are. Everything else at building I is just reconfiguring to account for the change in the building with the drive-through. This parking over here essentially just got shifted down a little bit. But otherwise, you know, everything else over here is unchanged and that kind of lines up with the existing drive-aisles there, so that kind of worked out.
I mean, you may not, you may not be ready to disclose who that tenant is, but we got to make sure that the queue length is sufficient for their typical business.
Yes, absolutely. I only showed this number of cars here, but obviously they could queue back to Winsel Gate before that was, you know, before that was really in conflict. So I think, I think I counted like 18 or 19 cars before. But yes, we will double check that that is, you know, going to, going to work for them. That's based, oh, I want to mention the mailboxes. So there's a shared mailbox drop-off location, there's actually two. One is temporary because the permanent location is still under construction. That is in front of Chipotle, here it is. Chipotle actually, let me also say, has come in with some revised seating area. So that's shown here. They'll have fenced enclosure around that and then they have access between there and the building. They also, there's also access for the general public. I mean, they can walk through here, but also around the outside of that fenced enclosure. So we, we removed a tree wall from here, just so people can walk around instead of going, going through that dining area.
Right, sounds like you hit all the highlights here.
Yep.
Thanks for that presentation.
Eric.
Anything else, Marty, that you wanted to cover before we go to Eric?
No, I think I just want to comment that we appreciate the CPL's work and effort. Andy's been, Andy and his team have been great in coming out and understanding and these modifications as we've gone on and a lot of which have been field changes. Several of them costly, but they were necessary and, and the, the expediting the work allowed us to maintain our schedule as best as we could during these difficult times. So a lot of this is cleanup. Secondly, I think that a lot of these are changes that improve the looking, feeling, working of the shopping center and, and mostly they're tenant related. And, and mostly they're tenant-related. You know, the Chipotle modification to their patio emanated from a change in their corporate layout, which results in, 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 from field feedback and experience and the same thing with the drive-throughs. So every tenant, good news is releasing space and the good news is that the tenants know exactly what works for them, et cetera. So with that, we're open to any questions that you have and we're, we reviewed Eric's recommendation and understand that we have to come back with the secret analysis and that'll be a separate discussion, of course.
Yep. Marty, did you want to say anything about the landfill that Kyle just mentioned briefly?
Well, the intent of separating the landfill is so that it's not burdened with the, it's not a burden of the commercial shopping center or the property owners association. We, as you know, we've been negotiating transactions with five or six various multifamily and residential developers. And we've shared with them the property association documents and we've received a lot of inputs from them and we've modified it and we will be filing a, an amended declaration to incorporate all of the comments necessary to make it a proper working diagram. One of the overwhelming themes was, and we can't have a property owner association that has a ongoing responsibility for a landfill. So the conclusion was to create it, create a separate lot, have it funded by, which we will fund properly and, and, and have it held in the single asset entity and truly funded properly and it'll be part of the property owner association that will be directly responsible for its obligations on its own. We're in the process of dotting I and crossing the T and all of that and, and that'll be forthcoming.
All right. Thanks, guys. You expected to come in with minor changes and things as you find tenants. So Eric?
I think Kyle covered all the proposed changes. Just in, in brief, we're looking for some summary analysis. For seek a review to enable the board to consider action on that in comparison with the development master plan and previous secret findings. A little further explanation of how the subdivision and the landfill would work. And there were a number of questions about some of the specific changes and we'll look to see how those are responded to for next time.
All right.
And there you have, there is a public hearing for this. The actions before the board are for the amended site plan and also for the subdivision. And we did know procedurally, it appears if the applicant, that the applicant subdivision will, will be a little more than the simple subdivision. They'll have to follow the same steps as they did previously for the, for the site with the overall subdivision plan. And then if they want to file in sections, again, there's a procedure for that.
Yep. It's big projects. There's some complications. When do you guys think you come back in for, with these updates for a March meeting or April meeting?
So yeah, it won't be ready for Tuesday. So unless we're going to do a special meeting, it would have to be for April.
All right. Thanks.
Can I, can I interrupt? With respect, Kyle, is there any, and Andy, is there anything specific that we would request the planning board to review and approve tonight that's necessary to keep our construction going? For example, the modification of the Chipotle fence or the temporary mailbox? What I'm wondering is procedurally, there's a couple of small items that we could address that will, that will enable us to keep the construction and tenants moving that perhaps the planning board could take action on tonight. I don't know if that's possible. Or if it's necessary, Kyle. Kyle, is it necessary?
Well, I mean, I think that's something the town can consider for Chipotle specifically. You know, we've, we've looked at other patios as, as a construction, you know, we could have it. It's, all the construction sketches are on here to memorialize and have them all in the same place. So everyone, you know, they can be looked back at and shown. But if, if, if they allow us to, you know, we had a construction sketch for that patio. So if they approve it separately in that construction sketch and then it's shown here again for, you know, just so it's all here, you know, that would be what I would throw out as, as an option.
Yeah, we can't act on the site plan, but we can continue to work with you, Kyle and Marty on, you know, those field change sketches like we have so far. And, you know, as long as those get memorialized on the site plan later, that's fine.
So if any of the board has concerns about those specific items, you know, I guess Marty would be looking for, for that feedback now. So it's the mailbox and the Chipotle patio or outdoor dining, I should say.
The mailbox is temporary.
So this, I didn't, so I didn't finish the, the permanent location. This is the temporary location and then once the area between E and F are final, this is the Smoothie King drive-through here. And then there's a one-way egress here. So that permanent location, which will provide a, like a pullover area with a mailbox here. And that actually, we are adding a sidewalk to that location will be the only change, additional change there.
Okay, that's just what I noticed. Great.
Kyle, I guess this is Andy. Do we have any field change sketches that are pending for the field, for the mailboxes? Or is that all going to be approved as part of the site plan?
So we don't currently, and I mean, the permanent, I don't see why the permanent location can't be with the site plan, but if we wanted to get the temporary mailbox approved upfront, we can provide that as, as a separate standalone sketch. We do have the, the sketch for the Chipotle.
Okay. Yeah. So I would, I mean, I would say if, if the mailbox is something critical that needs to happen for Chipotle or the future, or the, you know, the other buildings that are going up, get us a field change sketch for that. And then, you know, assuming the board doesn't have any concern there, that we can, we can look at that and get that going for you.
Okay. Marty, was there anything else? I mean, I'm trying to think too. Is there anything else that you see like this?
I think the temporary mailbox is important for all, for shop right, et cetera, because now that we have more than one tenant, the post office won't drop more than one drop, number one. Number two, the Chipotle, the outdoor seating area, if we could press that, you have that. I think that's the only two critical elements at the moment.
And the Central Hudson area is also, that's being, that was a previous amended site plan submission. So that's being approved and signed separately as well. So that will be before this, this is signed.
All right. I think, I think we're good with all that then. Andy, you have any further comments?
I think most of my comments have been touched on already. I do, I guess the one thing that we haven't really talked about is the rail trail along Hudson Heritage Drive. I'm looking for some more information on that in particular and specifically on the maintenance of that rail trail. It's a, it's a pretty wide piece of pavement that's going in. And since it is a county rail trail, I'm just wondering if there's going to be any kind of agreements for the county to maintain that separately from the road rather than it being the town's responsibility.
It, it's, it's up for discussion and I will circulate an email with an update on that within the week.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. All right. David, do you have any comments? You're still on?
The only, the only additional comment I would have, because most of my comments with respect to the procedure and what we need for a secret and, and for this phase, phase one amendment are reflected in the staff memo. But Marty, regarding the, the single asset entity that's going to be running and maintaining lot 17, I just want to emphasize, you know, in, in your submission, Kyle and Marty for the board for next month, we are going to be interested in exactly identifying that type of entity and ensuring that it will be operating and funded so that it can maintain and do whatever other actions necessary in perpetuity while this, you know, landfill is, is, is on-site, which is probably in perpetuity as well. So just indicating that it better will be funded is, is one thing, but understanding what the site management plan will be and what the costs associated with that plan will be in perpetuity is really, really going to be necessary for us to make a determination that, okay, this is a properly funded entity that can undertake its responsibilities.
All right. Thanks, David.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We, as you know, in regard to the landfill, it's a regulated action and we report to a higher, higher, higher entity than, than the planning board, but, and that we have bigger eyes that are watching it and making sure, but, but we'll package it up, make sure that we meet their requirement and I'm sure it'll satisfy, satisfy town board as well.
All right. Great. This is on for public hearing. So I move the open to public hearing. Move in second. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Anyone in the Zoom call or in the audience who wants to comment on this application of Hudson Heritage?
Kyle, it might be good if you could stop sharing for, we want to be able to see if there's anybody, you know, frantically waving. If you're on the phone, you can use star six to unmute as well. There's a few people that are on the phone.
Scroll through the, yeah. Looking for hands raised. Now, there's another opportunity as well with this project. So I, at this point, I move adjourned the public hearing to April 21st, 2022. Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Let's scroll around.
Well, thank you, everyone.
Go around the board for some comments. And start with Nicole.
I had a question about the bike path. Is that going to be lit?
Not in its entirety. So there is section, the county section is lit and then the sections along, any of the roads are lit. But there's no lighting provided. Like on the, it's not shown here, but on the, you know, the sections between those areas, not along the roadway are not lit. So like back here.
If you're sharing something, no one can see.
So the section from the Northern Stub to Paint Shop Road goes behind some of the, the phase two lots and those are not along town road and those sections are not lit.
Also, just quickly, I want to reiterate what the building department has stated about the EV chargers, that they must meet handicap accessible requirements. We have a lot of projects coming up that are putting in EV chargers and we just want to make sure that if people who are handicapped also have electronic vehicles, that they will have accessibility to the chargers. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, is there, is it all EV chargers? All EV chargers or one or, or a certain percentage?
I, I'm just stating that any EV chargers that you're proposing, if they can be accessible to, you know, a handicap parking area or a handicap spot.
Yeah. And other projects we've had it where, you know, they, they put one in next to the handicap spot and then, so it's shared with a non-handicap spot.
Exactly.
That kind of thing.
Yep.
But if you need clarification, I would contact Tim Sickles in the building department. He can point you in the right direction.
Seems to be the new law.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope. That's it.
Rocco?
Just to follow up on what Nicole stated here, the, the rail trails that goes over into Quiet Cove, that I, I think Quiet Cove is on the other side of Route 9. So you're just concerned with it going to the part of, when it hits Route 9? Then it's up to the county to take it the rest of the way?
Yep.
Correct. We provided that crossing as well.
All right. I'm sorry? What did you say?
And we, we provided the, the actual crossing as well across Route 9.
Oh, you did?
But not, nothing. Yep. Well, that's, that's under construction at the moment, but yes.
Okay. And that, and that will include all, all the appropriate signage and stuff like that because?
Yes, the lighting and the striping and all of that. Yep.
Okay. And we'll take a look at that. Thank you. Steve?
No questions at this time.
Let's see. Ben?
No, no comment.
And Peter?
Just two comments. It's been a while. I don't remember the signalization at the intersection of Hudson Heritage Drive and Route 9. Did we consider the rail trail in terms of a lot of pedestrian traffic, a lot of bicycle traffic? In other words, will, will a pedestrian or a bicyclist, will they be able to activate that crosswalk at that intersection?
Would have to, let me see. Is Phil on still by any chance?
I don't, don't see him offhand.
You guys, you guys should have put us first on the agenda. You would still be on.
For the next meeting, be fine. You don't have to, you don't have to give me an answer now.
The question on the south entrance, the second question was the south entrance? Is the push button?
The north entrance, I believe.
The north entrance, you know, because now we're talking about a rail trail at, at an intersection. I just was interested in, I don't recall whether the signal there, you know, was accessible for pedestrians or bicyclists. You don't have to answer me now. If you could just let us know, the next meeting would be fine.
You know, I'm 90% sure it was, but we'll confirm.
Just let us know.
Oops, sorry.
And the other thing, I just wanted to echo David Cooper with regard to the landfill. And we want to make sure that that's, we have something really tight there so we can move forward and that that's all I have.
Yeah. And what I would just add to Peter's comment, Kyle, on the crosswalk is, as part of the secret analysis, if there is a change in the, you know, safety parameters or anything at that intersection, just identify it and, and in the secret analysis.
Sure.
All right. Sounds good. My two cents is, you know, a few things. We talked about, I think somebody brought up lighting on the trail. I think that section of trail that goes to the shop right, I want to make sure that has sufficient lighting as well because I imagine a lot of mayor students and stuff will be using that to get to the shop right. And it's dark a lot of times of the year when the stores open. So and I was wondering if you had any comments yet on when you're going to try to finalize that food truck area as an amenity?
We just started working on taking the AHHRB approved plan and converting it into more fine-tuned construction detail. So we're, we're, we're working on that now.
Sounds good. Didn't want that to languish too long as things are getting built. The other issue I have is building I, you were talking about, you know, the drive-through move there. Not sure what business you have, but I'm, I'm certainly not a favor, a fan of having it wrap around the buildings. I like that connection to the, to the main road. And you can, if someone really has to, I don't think that happens that often that somebody has to go, you know, go out and back in again. So I think they can go out to the main road and back in. It's not that far. That's my two cents. I don't know if anybody else has any, on the board, has any comments on that as well? And queuing length, you know, the cars they have shown there for queuing, I think is about all you can fit in there because if you start backing it out to Winslow Gate, you're going to block parking spaces there. Unless you're confirming those are employee-only parking spaces and that kind of thing, but usually employees park further from the building. So.
Yeah, I was essentially, before I was just, I was just saying that they would be blocking the parking spaces, but they wouldn't be blocking like active traffic trying to get around. So they won't be blocking actual circulation until they get to that, to that 18, 19 number.
Yep. Yeah, we don't want to, so, I mean.
I think we'll, we'll confirm the queuing. We'll confirm the queuing. I think that's more than adequate. And frankly, I concur with your comment about the bypass lane, Chairman. So we'll, we'll confirm that and come back to you.
All right. That's all I have for now.
I move the planning board to review the action on this application, subject to the following. Respond in writing to comments of the planning board and all comments received from town departments and agencies and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included of, but not limited to the following. Response to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies, said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included of, but not limited to the following. Response to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies, said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included of, but not limited to, the following, one through fifteen.
Second.
Moved in second to defer, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Okay, a lot of good discussion here tonight, thanks, uh, good luck. Glad to see things, uh, progressing up there with the construction, and, uh.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, David.
Good night.
Thanks, guys, good night.
Have a good night, David. Next up, we got Eastdale Village seventeenth site plan amendment. On February seventeenth.
Ah, you should play the Lotto.
Good evening, everybody. Um, again, Jeff Kane representing Eastdale Village. Um, Mr. Chairman, I can, uh, do a little presentation again, if I can share the screen, if that, um.
Yeah, we got one significant change there, so, give us a shot at it.
Right, we're good, okay. Um, so, yes, we're here for the, uh, for the seventeenth amendment, I think, uh, you know, listening to Hudson Heritage, it's, we've taken kind of a different tack, I think, than they have. They've got a, a whole bunch of, uh, of the, the, the construction sketches, and we've been in front of, in front of you, but I think that's two, two, uh, two ways of getting at the, uh, the same answer, allowing the, uh, the projects to move ahead as, uh, as issues come up, so I think, uh, they think it's, the process has probably worked for them, as it's, has, has worked for us, so, thank you. Um, the, uh, tonight's focus is really gonna be back on the, uh, on the west side of, of forty-four. We have two really, two associated larger changes. Uh, but again, the overall on the west side, you can see the, the commercial core, uh, here coming off of forty-four, and the residential core, uh, and then the continuation of the commercial paralleling forty-four. So we've really got the changes, uh, in, uh, in, in buildings F and O two along forty-four, and then some parking back behind the, uh, behind the commercial core. So just to, to, to blow those up, this is, um, what was the former Ortega House, or really the Barnes House is the family that originally was in that, uh, in that historic house, uh, that was located, uh, right, uh, right here on the, on, on the, on the Ortega Lot, and next to it, we had originally proposed the, uh, the, the drive-in bank. Um, we've been approached by, um, by medical group to bring an ambulatory surgery center into the site, so the bank layout has been replaced with a, uh, twelve thousand five foot, uh, it's five square foot, single-story ambulatory surgery center, and that's this building F that, uh, that you see here. Uh, and then the O two building, uh, was considerably reduced in size, um, and that's, uh, that's, that's now, uh, between, uh, between the ambulatory surgery center and the, and the existing, uh, existing Frank House. So kind of, the, and just a little history on the, on the layout of the, of this, uh, the ASC, the Ambulatory Surgery Center. We had originally proposed it, um, really running with, with the short end of forty-four, and we'd had some initial discussions with, uh, with, with staff and, and the town, and it's like, well, we don't, didn't really wanna look at, uh, at a parking field here, so we, we, we worked real hard to rotate the building, get the parking to still work, uh, so that, uh, the parking again is behind, um, behind the building. I will say that due to the nature of the ambulatory surgery center, it's still, the, the doors need to relate to the parking, so the entrances are still on the, uh, on, not on the forty-four side, they're on the, uh, on the other side because of the nature of the, uh, of the use there. So we have separated, um, entrances and exits, actually, actually, well, separated exits for, um, uh, the patients after surgery, and entrance, uh, patients before surgery, and then on the side here is the, uh, is a staff entrance, so, but again, they're relating to this, uh, to this, uh, this parking field. And then a smaller, uh, two-story, um, the O two building, uh, first floor, it's a little, little under two thousand square feet, commercial building with, uh, some apartments on top, again, we think, again, it can, just kinda continuation of the theme of the mixed-use buildings, throughout Eastdale. And then, I guess, the other kind of ripple effect with the, uh, with the ambulatory surgery center is, uh, the proposed daycare center, we're showing that's smaller now, it reduced in size from ten thousand square feet to eighty-eight hundred square feet, and we relocated, uh, our shed, it was over here in the corner, relocated it over next to, uh, next to the daycare, um, because we needed to have the parking for the, uh, for the ambulatory surgery center. Um, and that kinda led us to the, kinda what, well, the next big change, uh, that, that it all kinda, kinda stems from the surgery center. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a park, it's not so much a traffic intense, intensive, but a parking intensive, uh, use. And so, um, um, we had proposed, we've proposed to add more parking behind Rossi's and our building, Building B, and, uh, and the, the premier medical building. Right now, that's a stormwater management practice, it's really a, a, a pond, and the proposal is to, uh, to take that pond, um, put a, put a different kind of stormwater practice inside, a subsurface infiltration system inside, and, and, uh, add a parking field on top of it. We net forty-six parking spaces when we do that. Um, and we really looked to minimize, uh, other changes, left the entrance and the exits lined up with the, uh, the two drive aisles as they come into the, uh, into the area, so we think it, uh, it fits in there pretty nicely, addresses, um, uh, concerns about parking in the commercial core, um, that, uh, we could have used the parking over when we had the, the O two building, but it, it wasn't really gonna work with the ASC, so we added this parking back over into, into this section. And, again, the only thing I skipped over was, um, when we created the, um, the, revised the buildings for the surgery center and the O two buildings, um, we needed to change the lot lines as well, so in the outline of these two red lots, those were the initial lots, the Ortega Lot and Lot Nine W, uh, so now we've put the ASC on its own lot, that's outlined in blue, and the O two building will be outlined in green, so the lot line revision, no, new lots, but we did, uh, did modify the, uh, the lot layout for those, uh, for those two, uh, again, to meet the specific uses. And I guess, I, just to touch on a couple of things, I, I, as I, as we went through the comments from, uh, from, from staff, and just wanted to, to kinda briefly go through those and see if there are more questions. Most of the comments were understood and, uh, I didn't have any issue with, but I thought more information would be helpful. Uh, first was traffic generation, you know, how did the traffic generation work when we went from, uh, went to the ambulatory surgery center? So we, we took the, uh, from the EIS, all of the land use codes for the specific buildings, uh, and then from the, um, the trip generation manual from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, uh, looked at the trip generation by square foot for each of those uses in the peak PM hour, and then applied all of the changes between the sixteenth and the seventeenth site plan amendment, what were the square foot changes in those uses, and really what happens is the, uh, the, the, the traffic generation drops by, um, just over fifty-eight vehicles, call it fifty-eight cars in the peak PM hour, and most of that is related to the, um, uh, really, truly two things. One, the drive-in bank isn't part of the proposal anymore, so that has a, uh, has a, has a big traffic generator of, uh, of over twenty, uh, twenty cars per, per thousand square feet, and then the daycare being smaller also has a, um, uh, fewer kids, fewer pickups and drop-offs, so has a pretty big impact on the, uh, on the number of vehicles generated in that peak PM hour. So overall, this change is a reduction in, um, uh, in, in vehicle trips, and, again, we didn't do, we didn't do the analysis to look at what the, once you add bypass credits, um, um, you know, the actual traffic is really less than the, uh, than the, than the fifty-eight vehicles, uh, but that was kind of the apples-to-apples, 'cause bypass was applied to the original analysis as well. This is just kind of just a real gross analysis of how many vehicles were generated as part of this, uh, part of this change.
Reduction is good.
Reduction's good.
Offhand, you know, the hours of operation of the ambulatory center?
Um, they, uh, they typically work just Monday through Friday, um, and, um, I, I, you know, seven AM till, till five or six PM is what they've seen. I don't have the specifics on how they're gonna operate here. That's typically what they, uh, what they've done.
Okay, yep. Not late-night hours, right?
Not late-night hours, no, that's, uh, and this is, right, this is not emergency surgery, this is just same-day surgery.
Okay, so, planned things.
Planned, yes, yes. Uh, the second was this soiled waste enclosure. Um, notice on the, uh, on the side of the building, there's a kind of a, a corral, uh, we call it, and it's got, um, uh, what it's really got in it is, is, it's, you know, nine feet by twenty feet. It's got three half-yard dump carts, it's kind of the big, big rubber-made half-yard dump carts, and eight fifty-gallon wheeled receptacles, uh, in it. It's located at a door coming out of the building at the end of the, the ORs, so that's kind of the, the, there's a, there's a dirty corridor and a clean corridor, uh, within the, uh, within the, the, uh, the operating rooms, so in between surgeries, they take, um, soled materials out, not red bag waste, it just, they take soled materials out, open the door, put them in a cart, and they're back in the, uh, back in the building. Uh, so this, uh, this kinda waste-holding area needed to be right outside that, uh, that, that back door, and then this is emptied, uh, every day by staff, the end of the day, these are rolled down to the dumpster. Um, there are dumpsters really throughout the, uh, throughout the site, there's not a dumpster, um, on this parcel, the dumpster, uh, for the commercial uses, um, is right here at the corner of, um, Founder's Way, actually, that's not a corner, on Founder's Way, uh, halfway between, uh, Eastdale Avenue South and, uh, and Elizabeth Lane. So that's where it would be, uh, be rolled to at the end of every day, so there's no smell, there's no food, there's no, there's no real waste, and there's, uh, that's, that's, has any, uh, any odors associated with it, and it's, uh, it's, it's dumped out every day by, uh, by staff.
Where does the medical waste go then?
Medical waste is, uh, is, is collected separately, those red bags are in a, in a, in a specific closet that has its own ventilation inside the, uh, inside, and it's handled separately.
We're holding that outside.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not, red bag waste isn't typically handled externally, so the carriers come inside, pick it up, take it. Uh, then the third thing was, uh, just, yeah, there was the question of some more information of the sidewalk at Elizabeth Lane and Founder's Way, and, um, yeah, it's a little, um, right, it's a little, uh, it's a little crazy. Um, doesn't line up, has a, has a crook in it, and, you know, why did that happen? So, I will say the, uh, we can certainly line up the, the crossing where he crosses Elizabeth Lane to make this sidewalk on the north side line up with the, uh, with the south side, we can, we can straighten that crosswalk up, that'll, I think that'll be an easy fix, um, but we, we couldn't have a straight run of sidewalk through here. You know, try as, uh, try as we might to, to plan ahead, uh, we thought we had the parking laid out for the, uh, this area of the site, and so this transformer is in, and there's, uh, some Verizon communication box in the ground, the water line's in, the sewer line is in, and then, uh, you know what, we need to move the parking lot back five feet, so we couldn't, we couldn't move all the sidewalk back, so we have this, uh, little, um, step in here at the sidewalk, and it's, uh, to get us around the, around the transformer. That was the single biggest thing that really couldn't move without taking the whole site down for, um, probably forty-eight hours for Central Hudson to come in, move this, move, unhook the transformer, move the transformer, rehook, so, um, we thought this little bit, little jig in the, in the sidewalk was probably, uh, a, a much better solution, um, than, than those changes. So, those are the three things, again, I saw in the comments that just wanted to provide a little more information on, so. If you have other questions, happy to.
All right. Thanks. Eric?
Sure. Uh, the application, it's on for public hearing, it's for a secret consistency review, uh, the lot line revision, uh, this submitted site plan and architecture. I think Jeff answered some of the key questions, uh, the decrease in track, we were concerned about the change in traffic. Jeff's analysis since the initial submittal, uh, I believe, addresses that, um, and the discussion of the sort of waste enclosure in the sidewalk. That answers our preliminary, many of our preliminary comments. There's a few others, uh, the board might wanna discuss, um, pedestrian, the form, elimination of the plaza area around the smaller building O two and no longer having any access to Duchess Turnpike. And there's a few other comments there for the board to consider, which I think can be handled as conditions of approval. Uh, we provided resolutions for that purpose.
Great, thanks, Eric. Andy?
Sure. Um, we have some technical comments, uh, comments about snow storage and how that's gonna be handled, um, particularly since, um, you know, the, the, the four-bay area of the ponds was, was gonna be an, um, emergency snow storage area. That's been eliminated, um, particularly on the south end of the site, so looking for some more information about that. Uh, we have some questions about the stormwater, um, the, you know, how that's being handled, we, based on review of the, the amendment. Uh, one thing that's not in my memo that I wonder if Jeff, Jeff could elaborate on, um, now that we understand what's happening with that soiled, um, soiled, uh, storage area, and the fact that it's, the, the carts are being rolled to a dumpster, it doesn't look like there's a clear pedestrian route to a dumpster, um, from that location, I'm wondering if it's, oh, I guess now that I see it, there, there is one shown along the, yeah, it's there, yeah, okay, okay, so that's available, okay, good. Uh, also, I wonder about the emergency generator, I, I realize there's a landscaping plan, um, if, if the board feels that that's, um, been adequately screened, I guess that would be a, a comment that I would like, um, to get input on. Um, other than that, um, I think everything else is spelled out in my memo, so.
Great, thanks, Andy. It's on for a public hearing, so I move we open to public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero, and I see we have one person signed up in the building here, Joseph Lentz, still here, okay. Come on up and say your piece on.
Sorry, I wanted to unshare here, I'm, uh, I can't find the unshare button.
Want me to boot you? I could do that.
Yes, type boot me, I can't, uh, I can't get the full screen on, so, all right, thank you.
Okay, am I on? Okay, my name is Joseph Francis Lentz III, and I preside at, uh, Twenty-Nine Darrow Place. I'm gonna start off by, I'm a little confused with the developer's directions, since Route forty-four goes east and west. I'm gonna refer to Phase One, which is occupied now, was occupied first as a north side.
Yep.
And the side, uh, where Darrow Place is, the south side, it just makes more sense to me. I'm gonna point out that since the north side first started occupation, um, it's been increasingly more and more difficult for residents, um, from Darrow Place to turn left onto Route forty-four, especially in the morning commute, so much so that now it's practically impossible in the morning to turn left. I know there are other ways to go left, I can go towards Pleasant Valley before I, and go over Hornback, go, uh, Van Wagner to get to Adams. But, uh, that is an excess use of gas and my time, and, you know. Now, I see by tonight's agenda that we're at number seventeenth amendment. I have not been following all the amendments, but in the beginning, an access road was proposed for Darrow Place.
That's still there.
It's still in, that's.
We actually moved up the schedule of that.
Good to know, well, that's my whole reason here, is I know they are probably, uh, I'm, I'm sure they want to, uh, build and, and rent out, you know, that's their main, uh, uh.
We were sure that was moved up.
Push, but, Darrow Place res, majority of Darrow Place residents would like to see that.
That's a big thing.
Done yesterday, if possible, um, and that, that's it.
That's it, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Check on that, thanks. Anyone else wish to, uh, comment on East Village Site Plan tonight?
If you're, if you're on the Zoom, raise your hand or just unmute yourself.
Not seeing any, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, uh, can you say, uh, first off, what the, the schedule of that road is?
Um, we are, um, we've had the easement with the Phillips family, um, and we are. We are, we've had the easement with the Phillips family, and we are closing on that, that easement sometime in March. I don't have a date set yet, but it'll be early March, we'll be closing the easement, and then hope to start construction on that, really as soon as we get into a little more of the spring, this, this year.
It's not frozen.
Yeah, that'll, that'll get done along with, along with, again, along with Building Fifteen. And then, I think as, as we discuss the process, it's going to get barricaded until we kind of get, get out of the construction, out of that area a little bit, so we can safely open up people to come through. But we are absolutely moving, moving that, moving that, that process forward.
Yeah, the three main buildings look like they're moving along, but you have.
Right.
Building Fifteen to do first.
Right, yep.
All right, thanks. Let's go to, round the board for comments at this point. Peter?
Excuse me, just two comments. One, I want to make sure that our town engineer is on board with the changes in the drainage. And number two, the applicant, I'm sure they will pay attention to the design of the buildings proposed, the ambulatory, particularly facing Route Forty-four.
All right, thanks.
No comment.
No comment on that, Nicole?
Sure. So the fire department was looking to put a hydrant at the corner of Elizabeth and Founder Way. Because of what you explained earlier, is that something that really can't happen?
Now, I, can I, can I share again? Is that the?
Sure.
All right. Um. Actually, let me, let me go back up to this, to this sheet. There's a, there's a hydrant that was relocated right, my cursor back, that was relocated between Forty-four and the, and the ASC. And that had to be relocated because when the sewer line came through this area, we needed ten feet of separation, so the hydrant had to move over a few feet. So that work is, is actually done. And then the other question was, he wanted a, a hydrant at the intersection of Elizabeth and Founder's Way. There's actually a flushing hydrant there now, so we just need to convert that to a, a regular fire hydrant, and there is certainly room to, to do that. That infrastructure is already in place. But they, it was funny, the exist, existence of that flushing hydrant is one of the things that kind of locked the, locked the sidewalk in place, but we can certainly fit it in, fit in the new hydrant with, with that configuration.
All right, great, thanks. Let's see, did I have anything else? Not really. We were talking about a generator off of Forty-four that could possibly.
Well, that's, that's in front of the building F there.
Yeah, yeah, that we were wondering whether or not it could be moved, but.
Landscaped around or whatever.
Or landscaped or something, yeah.
Right. We have landscaped it, um, we'll look to see if we can do anything more with, with its, with its location and landscaping. It's, the electrical room is in the corner here, and that was one of the reasons why the generator is, is, is back in there, but we'll, it is in a sound enclosure, so there won't be noise issues related to it. But we'll, we'll, we'll see if we can improve that condition.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rocco.
If I think you may advance, sir, to the question. You said the, the generator is going to be enclosed, and so, now, is that, is that gas or, or is that a, a different fuel? I mean, natural gas versus, because natural gas is pretty quiet.
It has to be diesel. The, the rules related to medical facilities are that it has to be what's called an uninterruptible power source, and natural gas is considered interruptible. So it has to be a diesel.
Okay.
You'll see that with medical facilities, that they all, we, we've got, we've got gas here. It's practically sitting on the gas line, but you gotta have a diesel.
I would think you could, I think you could run out of diesel quicker than you can run out of the gas.
Right, there's a, they calculate the storage on that, and I, you know, I, uh, I don't actually know about propane, but I would, propane seems like it would be, it would be okay, but I don't see these things.
And propane also will run a lot quieter than diesel. Something to look at.
We'll, we'll take a look, yeah, right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
No comment.
All right. I've got, as usual, I have a couple of comments. You know, Eric brought it to mind, but I was looking at some others. I would like to see a, you know, connection to the Route Forty-four sidewalk from Building O two as well from, as well as from the daycare, like where the drop off of daycare is on the east side. If you could just extend it through the, through that handicapped spot there. Looks like just a little segment.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I didn't respond to one of the comments, Eric's comments for, because we were, we were going to extend the plaza up here and kind of give, uh.
Oh, you're going to extend the plaza.
Yeah, we, we didn't want to run, I will say that we don't want to run a straight sidewalk from here up, up to Forty-four, because there is a sidewalk here, there's a sidewalk on Eastdale Avenue. We didn't want that to be people's kind of just cut through. But we did want to be able to have a relationship. You're right, there should be a relationship back into this area from Forty-four, so we're going to extend the plaza up to the, up to the sidewalk, but not just give a, a straight kind of bypass through there, was, was our, was our thought about traffic and, and these particular uses.
And I was thinking, anybody on the other, you know, living on the other side, you're going to walk some kids over to the daycare, add a little stub there, you know.
Right, and, and you're right, we should, and adding, adding, adding a piece here, yeah, makes, 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 makes sense. We can, um, well, it won't be straight, because there's a light pole right here, but we'll, we'll, maybe we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll make it work.
Insurance infrastructure.
Yeah, right.
And I guess my other question is, like, if you knew what the use of the building O bottom floor is, because that, you're going to have that waste going by there, you know, as people are doing that once a day in the evening, and.
Right.
The other issues of it being put out there, the.
Right, then again, that'll, that's, that's going to be fenced. We think this is just going to be just a, a little, a store. I mean, we have the cottages that are on the other side, and they're like five hundred square feet. This will be closer to two thousand square feet, so it's bigger, but it's, we think it's just going to be a, just a boutique of, of, of some sort. Probably not food here.
Okay.
But it's just a commercial, commercial, we don't, we don't have a tenant, but that's, that's what we anticipate going in, going in there.
Is it just, you know, the, the activity, the noise, light, you said no odors, hopefully, but the, everything with that big ambulatory center can have an impact on the, on just that tenant above that as well, right?
Right, right.
So, so whenever the, the lighting plan is looked at for that whole thing, to, to make sure that that is not spilling into those tenants and whatnot from the ambulatory center, is the condition. Also, the, when you get to it, I don't think you're ready for architecture tonight.
We are not. We, I'd, I'd hope to be, but it's just, it's just not ready. And I didn't want to bring something here that wasn't, that wasn't right.
Well, as you're preparing it, and it looks, you know, just a straight, long-sized building, it looks like, so.
Yep.
No, no jogs yet.
Right, right, no jogs yet on this, right? It'll, it'll, it'll get some, right.
But, yeah, you know, you have a follow-up question on that, is, I mean, is there any way to have the, the Forty-four side be a second front, you know, an entrance, a pedestrian side entrance?
It, it, it doesn't work with the, the functionality of this building, because this whole side here are ORs and, and, and recovery here, and as, as they relate. So we really can't have people walking, walking through that, that area. So it wasn't, and we, we, we looked at it, and because that was one of, that was one of the issues when we, as we rotated it, we knew we weren't going to be able to, we didn't think we were going to be able to have an entrance on the backside. We worked through it with the architects and just, we couldn't get it to, couldn't get it to function right for this type of use.
The operation may affect the windows and all that, too, I guess, but.
Right, so the, yeah, the windows, right, we don't, the, the windows are higher than what you would probably see on, because they, when they're not into the, there's light into the OR, but it is above, above head level for those windows. You'll see that when it comes in, but, but it is a, right, but we do, we're able to get windows in across that, across that elevation.
Okay, yeah.
But, yeah, privacy, yeah.
I was going to suggest follow windows if it's, if you want something, but.
Yeah.
If, whatever works, but you, you guys know architecture pretty well, so keep that all in mind. I think Mid-Midbury County mentioned, you know, you're adding all that new parking, which made me think of that, you know, that's next to that residential there. Is there any additional screening that has to happen to, to that residential with the parking there? Headlights coming in?
Um, along, along, the front property or along?
Along the, all the way to the, to the west side. McCaffrey and.
I thought you meant Zagrow. Oh, 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 on the.
McCaffrey, that's the name I was looking for.
Got it, got it. Right, talking about here, right. We, we did beef up the, the landscaping along here, and again, if, if we think there needs to be more in there, then certainly we'll work through that with, with, with staff, adding more, more landscaping into here.
And I guess the county would, you know, should you need that much parking, or?
Yes, yes. They don't go to Rossi's, I guess, that's.
Okay. So you expect it to be utilized?
We, we do expect it to be utilized, right.
All right, that's good to know. And we talked about the medical waste, I think that's it then.
I move the planning board to the Eastdale Village Seventh Amendment Site Plan and Lot Line Revision involves incremental changes to the Eastdale Village project of multiple magnitude and scope, and that are non-significant and consistent with the previous secret findings adopted March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and amended September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, as modified by the proposed Eastdale Village application received January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second. Moved in seconded for seeker. Call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board find the proposed modifications to the areas yard and both provisions of two-ten dash twenty-seven are consistent with the goals and objectives of the town plan and chapter two-ten pertaining to the intent and purposes of the MHC district pursuant to two-ten dash twenty-seven, and that the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval valid for sixty days for a lot line alteration between lot nine W, as well as field map number eighty-six-two B and the lands of MHTC Development LLC, Eastdale Village West, and also grant a sixty-day time extension of said approval from April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two forward to June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, subject to the following. Response to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies and sub-responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included of, but not limited to the following items in section E.
Second. Call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Call one item. Now, Mr. Lentz sat here for a couple of hours. Would it be possible, and he, and he left before he got an answer to his questions, could somebody on the staff contact Mr. Lentz and just let him know, you know, where things stand?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be starting construction in the spring here, so that'll be good.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village Seventeenth Amendment Site Plan, subject to the following. Response to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included of, but not limited to the following, one through ten.
Second. Moved in seconded for, to grant conditional. Call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion passes six to zero. And you said you're holding off on architecture, so we'll look for that another time.
Great, thank you again.
It was Joseph Lentz III, Twenty-Nine Darrow.
Yep, Twenty-Nine Darrow. Okay, next up is Eight Tucker Drive. Who's on for representing Eight Tucker Drive tonight?
Mr. Darrow, this is Kelly Liveall with KRC phone.
Hi, Kelly.
How are you?
Good.
Would it be okay if I share my screen?
Yep, go ahead. You've got a big agenda tonight, so.
Yep, I'll go quick.
Thanks for waiting.
Yes.
Continue on.
No worries. I think many of you know this project, but we'll just do a kind of a quick recap, so you know where we've been, because we were before you last year seeking the planning board's approval for a contractor's yard with a very sizable building, access drive, et cetera. So the property is located off of Tucker Drive. This is the Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union Stop and Shop, and then the rail trail is, you know, up through the back. This is the parcel, kind of an unusual parcel with a flag in the middle of it. This is the moving company and Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union. Vacant land, about eleven and a half acres. It's currently zoned in the BSC zoning district, and we are before you because we were seeking to have the property rezoned to the IH district, and then to seek your site plan approval for the proposed use. Just a note, that this is the survey for the property. We, I just wanted to point out that this is a zoning map that at some time, a few years ago, this property actually was in the IL zoning district, and the town was moving forward to try to initiate some additional commercial development in this area and rezone the property to the BSC. And so we're seeking really to bring it back to, I call IH and IL almost the same, so we're asking to have it returned and rezoned to IH. This was the previously approved site plan, and so if you recall, there's an access drive into the site, and off of this access drive, Hudson Valley Credit Union has an Angrasse Brass, and also the moving and door company for that drive is actually owned by this parcel. We were proposing, again, this, you know, sizable building, and we started to do geotech and some deep tests for the storm infrastructure, and then obviously encountered some of the subsurface materials that are part of a larger landfill. I think the town property encompasses this, the moving company, Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union. So we took a long pause and tried to determine what we were going to be able to do with the property. We've been working with New York State DEC on what we can do for the property. DEC has authority on a change of use, so we have applications before them for change of use for a contractor's yard, and what we're proposing to do is simply leave the land as it is. No changes, no grading, no building, parking, no stormwater improvements, but simply to fence in the open area that's shaded on this plan that is outside of the floodplain, outside of the wetlands, and outside of the current tree canopy, and utilize it for material storage, really aggregate materials, stone, mulch, and so forth, that are utilized by the applicant. We are still proposing to make the improvements that we committed to on the access drive, so we work really extensively with Andy Lern and Carol Knapp and the rest of the town departments on how to improve that building culvert that is underneath of the driveway. So as part of this, these improvements, we would still proceed with those culvert repairs. We did not include that entire package in the submission, but our next submission will be complete with that. We just wanted to get this back on track with you, so you understood what we were doing. We, as part of the contractor's yard zoning, we would install a fence around in the shaded area, which is again on the edge of the tree lawn, and that would be the demarcation, there's supposed to be a demarcation of where the area is where materials are stored, really so it don't kind of splurge out. And we note that Carol Knapp made a recommendation that at the base of this fence, which is supposed to be installed six inches into the ground to prevent the blingings turtles, that she wanted an additional material on the outside of the fence, just to protect turtles from going through that fence. So we acknowledged that that would have to be added. So again, no structure, no bathrooms, no water sewer, no grading, lighting, simply leaving the land as it is. The contractor's yard section of your code has a maximum area that you can use of thirty percent, and so this area is one point eight acres, which is approximately fifteen percent of the property. This again just is a detailed blown up of the improvements that we were proposing for that culvert design. I will not go through that tonight. We went through great lengths with Andy's office and Covert Ventures on trying to make sure that we had something that everyone was happy with. Carol was fantastic on helping us with permitting and so forth, and so we're hoping to pick that up again and try to come up with a schedule for those improvements. We did provide a summary chart, but predominantly everything is not applicable because there's no structures and there's no improvements on the property. We'll add the max contractor's yard onto this table, so that you have it. We didn't have that on there, just to show that we're with underneath. We didn't have that on there just to show that we're with underneath of the thirty percent criteria. Um, with that, I, um, will leave it to you if you have any questions. I just want to make two comments. Um, we did receive all of the comments and we went through them. Um, we did note, um, I think some of the things in our presentation that I went over. We will reach out to Carol, just resume those discussions with her and ensure that whatever detail she wants on that fence is acceptable. I did see the notes here about that kind of county planning. I will reach out to him and have communication with him so he understands that there's really, there's no improvements. Um, we understand their concern from the rail trail, so I'll work with him to make sure that we address that. The fire department was, um, seeking more improvements on the property that we are looking to do mostly to address fire, um, truck circulation. So we'd like, um, the time to be able to reach out to, uh, the fire department and just have a conversation with them. Uh, we're reluctant to put any other pavement or concrete and so forth onto the site, but we'll work with him to make sure that whatever his needs are, you know, that we can find a way to accommodate them. Maybe there's a parking space or something in the site that we can provide. Um, other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, I just had a quick one while I'm thinking about the, uh, so is the storage mainly for equipment or for materials or both?
For materials, it's really, um, they do, I mean, it's a landscaping company, so there's a lot of, um, leaves, uh, mulch, uh, stone, most of the aggregate material that they're utilizing for their landscaping projects.
Okay, great, thanks. Kristin?
Okay, great, and thank you, Kelly, for the overview. It's still on. The, uh, the project, so again, just to get, to reiterate, the project started at the town board, um, was referred to the planning board for a seeker review. So the, the planning board is, uh, they did circulate for lead agency in ten and remain the lead agency for the environmental review. Um, the, upon acting on seeker, the planning board would be providing a recommendation to the town board regarding the zoning district change. Um, just a point of clarification, the site historically was IH, um, was rezoned to BSC and now they're looking to change it back to IL, um, where the contractor's yard, um, is permitted.
Thought Kelly said IH again, so.
Yes, I'm sorry, Kristin's correct and I misspoke, she is correct.
Okay, light industrial, okay.
Wouldn't have put it past me, it's just been one of those days, so. Um, well, one of those years, uh, and it's only February. Uh, okay, so anyway, um, the application is on for seeker review to, you know, basically, uh, we wanted, um, Kelly and her team to provide you with a presentation that the project has changed. Um, so we're, we're not like reinitiating seeker, um, this is on for a public hearing. We did renotice the public hearing, given that the project did change. Um, we felt that that was, um, necessary. Uh, we, we are looking for some correspondence, um, from DEC that the contractor's yard as proposed is permitted. Um, we, we don't doubt that it is, but we need to understand what criteria then, um, are flagged and need to be put in place, which I think you had already touched upon and you're working with them. So we're just looking for that documentation, not only for planning, you know, to review, but the board and also council, um, and engineering. You know, we, there are some repeated comments, uh, again, because this project sort of went away. You know, we wanted to make sure that we captured everything in our review at this point.
Understood.
So when you make your next submission, it's just wholly complete for the board's benefit.
Okay, okay.
And then, uh, you know, so at this point, um, there are just a couple of things, um, you know, you touched upon working with Aspen Environmental, um, who Carol is on, so I won't steal her thunder too much. Um, but definitely that coordination needs to take place, um, as in addition to, uh, coordination with engineering about that culvert work. Um, it has been now outstanding, um, as we've been working through this review. Uh, but also coordination with the fire department. I know that there was some concern about access and, um, quality of road and they do bring those large vehicles back. God forbid there's an emergency, so definitely getting, um, together with them to work through those concerns. Um, again, county, uh, at the county level, DPW Bob Balkin did note, um, the, the real concern was about how the rail trail would look from, or what the site would look like from the rail trail.
Yes.
Um, so we also just want to confirm the buffers that are required within our town code for this particular use and the site. Uh, so we'll have to, um, once you have a definitive plan and we're not changing fencing or location of anything, uh, we want to make sure that we're running that by the zoning department, um, to, to confirm that there aren't any required, uh, landscape buffer variances. Um, I think based on our code right now, you're, you're about twenty feet short, um, so we might need to just take a closer look at that.
Okay.
And then, uh, so staff is recommending a deferral at this time. Um, and I will go ahead and pass it on to Andy and Carol and Mr. Nelson if you have any comments.
Pardon me, um, I, I was glad to hear, uh, that the applicant is defining what the use is going to be. You know, it's going to be a materials yard for their work, um, so thank you, Kelly. Um, on, on the, the floodway and the floodplain, um, I, I did look at a ninety-six subdivision map, which I'm, I'm sure that Andy Lern and Kristin and Tom Wyacek have looked at. And so assuming that those, um, areas are, are defined appropriately on the plat, then, you know, then you flow down figuratively, um, to, to what is required.
Yeah, it seems like they're fencing in only the non, the areas above the flood.
And then the, uh, the final thing, uh, for me, uh, is, is that access way. Not because I left the bank the other day and almost lost a tire, but, uh, it's a way that is shared or will be shared by three, uh, pretty substantial and busy, uh, commercial properties. So my assumption, uh, Kelly, is that you'd be proposing some form, um, of either confirmation or new, um, joint maintenance agreement and easements, uh, for the benefit of the other two lots.
Okay.
Sounds good, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Andy?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think we hit on most of the high points already. Um, I just want to reiterate that the sooner we can get that culvert repaired, uh, the better because the longer it stays in the condition it is, the worse that the driveway is going to get. Um, so if anything we can do to move that ahead, uh, would be great. I also want to, uh, just point out that, um, with the clarification that it's going to be a material, a material storage area for contractor, um, that in particular is going to require some permanent erosion controls, um, which, uh, you know, with the limitations from the DEC on grading, um, could be a challenge. So we're going to look for some clarification on that, uh, what you can do, because you can't just have soap fence there forever. Um, you know, usually that's going to require swale on a, you know, some sort of a sediment trap. Um, so something, something to look for, um, in a future situation.
Okay.
Kelly, were you putting down, were they putting down gravel or anything or like how's the?
No, they were just gonna clear that and use that area for, you know, if they have gravel, put it in one area. If they have mulch, put it in another area and just use that for storage. So there was no intentions to put a base down and create an impervious surface.
No, I, I wasn't thinking impervious, but, you know, it's something that the machinery is not going to sink into the mud if they're trying to access the.
Understood, yeah. Well, we're bringing, the driveway we're bringing in, so there'll be a driveway into the site that will be paved. Um, and then after that, once you're into the site, and perhaps that needs to be extended a little bit. So, um, that's a good point and we can look at that.
Where are the materials? Yeah, you need to be able to get to the materials.
Yes, yeah, understood.
Efficient fashion, all right.
Um, Andy raised, uh, well, I didn't want to interrupt Andy, but are you, were those all your comments? I have a question.
Uh, that was all I needed, I wanted to bring up at this time, yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, we, we're equally interested in moving this forward and, um, just a question, I guess, to Jim and to Kristin is that this was originally listed as an unlisted action, but, um, not sure if this is classified as, you know, potentially a type two action because there are no structures anymore. Whether or not, um, if seeker were addressed more expeditiously, you know, we could move ahead with that. Um, I know Carol's on and I can call her offline and see if there's a way that we can figure out what the permitting requirements are to any for that culvert. But it was my understanding originally that we couldn't do any work on that culvert until we had our final approvals. But if there's a way that we can advance, um, that, we're certainly happy to talk to you about it.
Yeah, before the spring rains hit.
Um, yeah.
Schedule wise, I would just suggest making a complete submission at, at your earliest convenience. I, I'm guessing you're not going to be turning around a submission for the March meeting, but by April, if, if the package is complete and we have all the detail from DEC and all of that lined up, I don't see a reason why, um, you know, we could potentially.
Address that, okay.
Yeah, and then at that point, you would also be being referred back to the town board about the zoning district change.
Yeah, yeah. So I think formally, we could, we could move forward with the work on the culvert once seeker's completed, but we can't move forward with any other work until after we have our rezon.
Unless the board or, you know.
Yeah, we can figure that.
Okay, all right, we can talk about it. The other issue that we have with the trees is that there's, I think, between six and ten trees that are within the area um, that is not yet cleared and we're trying to determine if there's a path with the town that we can get some sort of an approval to remove those prior to the end of March.
Yeah, I don't think so, given that where you are in terms of seeker. Usually we like to have a seeker determination before we grant that. So unfortunately, I don't, I don't think that's going to work.
There, is there the option of posting a bond so that those trees can be removed? If not, we're not going to be able to do any work there until, um, October. Yeah.
Or, or I think, is there a possibility for Carol to examine those trees specifically and say, you know, whether they are in any event or not and then they can be removed outside the, the date?
Well, that, that's been a concern of mine because, um, you know, the, the culvert repair has to be done, or the trees can't be moved until seeker's finished and, and then we're into the, um, the bat moratorium there. Um, has been a concern, I wanted to talk to you folks about that. Um, I guess the interim is, the amount of the trees there are, if my collection is correct, I think there's a lot of them that aren't in great shape, so, uh, potential habitat. We can, and Ken, you're familiar, we've spoken about, uh, Mike Fishman can go in and do a, you know, a one day bat study. The emergent study, uh, then the trees could be removed, you know, the following day. If we can't complete the seeker process before the moratorium, I think that's probably your best bet. Uh, I don't think, as Andy alluded to, we don't want to wait until, uh, next October to take care of this culvert. So we're really going to catch twenty-two here.
So the trees are related?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I didn't realize that. But it sounds like you could remove them outside of, after March thirty-first if, if you take, examine them.
I, I'll go take a look, but I, if they're, if they're not in great shape, um, and I have a feeling that's the case for the few of them, you know, we're going to have an issue.
They are potential habitat.
Correct. They are potential habitat. Can you?
Yeah, so I, I guess one of the questions I had was when we met out there, um, earlier last year, um, when we were first moving through this process, we had talked about, uh, potentially doing it under an emergency plan and getting special permission to do that because it's a hazard and needs to be there to be done. Um, I know through the, the discussions with, uh, Michael Fishman on other projects that i- as long as everybody's on board, that this is potentially a hazard and everyone is in agreement that this is an emergency that needs to be done. There are other specifications that they may be able to use that way to still take the trees down outside of that window.
That is correct, I put to the board to agree with.
I think that's a legitimate possibility, particularly with the flooding issues that we've seen upstream with, uh, some of the heavier rain events. Um, I, I, I think that would be a, a good thing to consider, you know, at, at least just the culvert part alone. You know, you can talk about the, you know, the guide rail and the pavement and stuff like that later. If we could get the, the culvert done itself separately, I think that might be a good idea.
I agree with Andy.
Yeah, that.
Then, Kristen, is it possible that instead of deferring this public hearing to the April meeting, we could defer to the March meeting so that Carol, Andy, Ken, myself and any other town representatives so we can get together on the tree removal issue?
I was just going to suggest that, um, because the, again, the deadline is Tuesday next week, so if you can get us, um, some material or regroup by even, I don't, I mean, March is going to be crazy for me, I already know. Um, so by the end of next week, I mean, I don't know if that's doable, um, to get us some, to get us some information. And of course, um, yes, we could, we could defer till March and then this way you come back for that sole issue, but we'd be deferring on everything else.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, just on the trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, just on the trees and the culvert issue, if we can try to get, if we stay on that agenda.
Yep.
Okay.
What's one more?
I always try to be quick, but.
No, no, that's good. Um, no, I think that, I think that makes sense and based on what I'm mumbleding at the board level here, that's kind of what, um, I think everyone's in agreement, that it's a priority.
Yep.
Yep. All right, yeah, we'll do that and, uh, see what you guys can work out.
All right.
All right, uh, anything else?
So then the only note is that we would be adjourning the public hearing to March seventeen.
All right, um, at this point.
Do we have to open the public hearing?
And if we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on Eight Tucker Drive project? Looking for a show of hands on Zoom, nobody in the room here? Not seeing anyone. Is that somebody? Yes, hi, do you have a comment about Eight Tucker Drive?
Yes, um, so the intent is therefore to, um, build the tower replacement in kind? Is that what you're doing, you're preparing it all from carry on?
No, I, I think you're misunderstanding, this is a, this is a storage area, nothing to do with the, any towers.
And storage for, it's storage for what?
This is for a contractor's yard, uh, landscaping materials like mulch. This is not the cell tower application I think that you're interested in.
Yes, I'm not interested in it, no, but yes, I, um, that was my question.
Is there anybody on for Eight Tucker Drive?
Doesn't sound like you have another opportunity, we're gonna, I move we adjourn the hearing to March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes eight, uh, six to zero. All right, throw around the board for comments on this. Nicole, start with you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, uh, everything that I was wondering if that I was already gone over.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, Kelly, one quick thing, I was going through, uh, the, uh, uh, appendices and then appendix G has a site record for, uh, Love, uh, Road, um, uh, Brownfield cleanup. How does that relate to this project?
So, Marco, that's a good question. What happens is when we do a search with New York State DEC and we do a query on the environmental mapper, DEC actually has an inventory of other sites in the area and that site actually comes up. It's an automated, automatic response from New York State DEC that identifies other sites in the area that may have other contamination and we're required to list those and provide those to you. That site is very, very far away, as you know, but we're required to list it.
Okay, so it has no connection with this site, thank you.
Correct, yes, but good catch.
Uh, Steve?
Yeah, Kelly, I just wanted to clarify, uh, is there a requirement to maintain loading off-road equipment onsite to move the materials?
Um, that's a good question and I will get an answer to that. I did not think that there was, but I will get a, a clear, um, definitive answer of, well, there are not, there's going to be equipment that stays there that, that moves internal around, so I'll get that answer.
Yeah, it's a good question of, and then is that, you know, no structures are planned with the.
Correct.
But, uh, I may not want to.
It's sort of, I assume it's yes, but I want to get clarity and tell you what equipment.
All right. Uh, Ben?
Nothing.
And Peter?
Nope.
All right, I guess, uh, I think we've covered most everything, the culvert repair, you said no gravel coming in. You're not bringing in any, breaking any topsoil, keeping outside the floodway. So the only thing in my mind too is the, you know, is the, what it's going to look like from the rail trail. Before, when the building was there, you had a, some non-deciduous trees there, some evergreens and such to screen the building, but now it's a chain link fence, black.
Yes, yeah.
But.
Yeah, we'll look at that and see what that buffer is.
So if it's not, uh, it's not, that's my concern about big construction equipment being stored there, how it would look, but if it's piles of mulch and stuff, it's less intrusive, but.
Understood, okay, yeah, okay.
See what it looks like.
Okay.
All right.
Very good.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, one through fourteen. and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, 1 through 14.
Moved and seconded, called to question. It's alright, called to question, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Alright, thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
See you in March hopefully. Next up is 900 Duchess Turnpike AP Packaging, it's back, some site modifications. Who's on for representing AP Packaging?
Um, again, Mr. Chairman, that's Kelly, Kelly Leibert with KRC Planning.
Looks like you're just rearranging the, the shape of the characters, or whatever.
Yes. To start this, okay, I'm gonna try to be as quick as I can. Uh, I think everyone knows the location, which is the, I call this Alpha Laval or D Laval. Um, this is the existing survey, a 50 acre site in the IH zoning district. Um, this is really right next to East Dale, the other application that you have before you. Um, if you recall, we received site plan approval from this board, um, last year and it was predominantly for walk on what I would call the east side, but I know we have different orientations here, but the east side, the side that faces East Dale, for the construction of a new garage door, uh, loading dock base, which is well under construction. Um, we are here tonight to request some amendment to that plan. There's three amendments. Um, we did provide you with this particular sheet and there's blowups for each of the amendments that we're requesting, but I'll go through each of those one individually. Um, we did also provide you with a comparison sheet showing you the previously approved site plan and the proposed amendments. Um, the three items that we are seeking amendment is, one is the removal of speed humps along Victory Lane, I'll go through each of these individually. The second is to eliminate the dumpster enclosure and I'll show you where we were referencing. And the third is to add four silos and a pad for storage of the resin. So the first is the removal of the speed humps, so again, this is Victory Lane. There were three existing speed humps on Victory Lane and we are proposing a speed hump here at the new sidewalk boxing. And we are requesting to remove the speed hump that was approved by the planning board and the three other speed humps because we are actively discussing, um, the secession of Victory Lane to the town of Poughkeepsie. This is something I think that's gone on and on and on for many years, but we're trying to wrap it up and get a complete package. Um, we've met with Mark Pfeifer and we're the supervisor and both have indicated, um, that the town is receptive to taking over Victory Lane. One of the items of the list of items that, um, the highway superintendent provided us is that all of the speed humps would have to be removed. Um, they would not accept the road in that condition, among some other changes, but for purposes of, um, this planning board, since you approved the installation of a new speed hump in this area, we're seeking to get your approval to remove that and just, um, provide a conventional, uh, pedestrian crossing there and then remove the other speed humps that are on the site. The second request is to eliminate, um, the dumpster enclosure that was approved by the planning board. So if you come down Victory Lane, um, East Dale is on the top of my screen and you pull on, this is the area on the side of the building where we just installed all of the new garage door loading area. There's a dumpster over in this corner, this is a picture of those dumpsters. These dumpsters are owned by Bosse's, who is occupying the front of the building and, um, they would have been, uh, leaving this site if it weren't for the fact that their building isn't completed and so they had an unexpected delay. Um, they should be leaving this property within the next 18 months. I think it's probably down to a year at this point, and those dumpsters will be removed. So, uh, they're not being used by the current owner and, uh, those dumpsters would be removed from that area. The owner is using the dumpsters in this location and this is the opposite side of the building, so again, the dumpsters we're asking to not put a dumpster enclosure around is here. This is the area where they're using, um, the current dumpsters, which are on the side of the building underneath of these trees. The third thing that we're seeking approval for, amended site plan approval is for the, um, permission to install four, uh, silos, which will contain the resin that's used in the bubble pack, uh, the bubble wrap packaging. Um, the silos are 12 feet in diameter, 36 feet tall, where the building is 25 feet 6 inches and the max height permitted, um, in this code is 40 feet. So under the max height, slightly taller than the existing building. The silos would be enclosed with a fence and then we were proposing a small area here for loading. This is just a blowup, we provided a concrete pad for the town engineers review prepared by Mark Day's office, um, you know, for the placement of these, uh, silos. And this is a rendering showing what that would look like from the, um, side of the building, looking towards the building, so the addition of the silos, again, this is 25 feet 6 inches and these would be 36, uh, feet tall. We could provide a truck training path, even though this is an industrial site and there's just gogs of tractor trailers and trucks that come through here, we just wanted to show you that a tractor trailer can get through here to deliver, um, the resin that would be loaded in this area. So this is just an image of the company, this is a handbook that they gave us, um, from the silo company. We would need to get the specific drawings from them for, you know, this specific, uh, site, assuming that this is accepted. Um, but this is just to give you perspective of what they look like. Um, we could give you the MSDF sheet for, um, the product. Now, I have a little YouTube video that I can show you if anyone's interested, or you can drop down this link. It is on the submission that we gave you and this is a real helpful video that explains what is resin. And, um, uh, it's kind of a nifty little.
We already had that, we had that discussion at another meeting about the resin, yep. They're little pellets, yep.
Yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to probably do that video. I would encourage everyone to look at it because it's actually a pretty cool process, the way that they make bubble wrap, um, even though it is a competitor, but this was a great video, so we wanted to include it. Um, but I just, so, so resin does come on the site now and this would be a better opportunity for them to store the material versus having, uh, you know, more frequent truck deliveries than, um, and it would reduce the number of truck deliveries. So that's why we're here tonight and we're happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Alright, thanks, Kelly. Um, Eric?
Sure. Um, this is continued from last, the last submittal, uh, public hearing and it's a type two action for Seekers, so it doesn't require an environmental review. Um, the, let's see, the silos, uh, just to be brief, the, the silos are 36 feet high, the building's about 25 and a half feet high, as you saw the elevations. Um, we thought it looks, uh, we don't have any particular concerns with that for site plan. However, they will, the applicant will need to address comments raised by the engineer and the floodplain administrator that's gonna, that looks, appears to, uh, result in an increased height of the base of the structure and so they'll have to work with those entities to figure out how they're gonna do that. It might get, it might get a few feet higher. Um, and it may also, if depending on the results, it may or may not require a height variance.
Hopefully stay under the 40 feet.
Well, yeah, if it goes above 40 feet, then we need a variance before getting a site, that could be a condition of site plan approval. Yeah, along with the silos, the south parking area, we made a couple of comments recommending some adjustments for the handicap parking in for safety, um, along that aisle. The crosswalk and the humps, the board previously discussed, uh, its receptivity to the, eliminating the, the elevated, the elevated portion of the crosswalk, but the crosswalk would remain and elimination of that, uh, reduction in height there, elimination of bumps, no concerns there. I will note that the Victory Lane dedication is not part of the action before this board, it's a future event and, and not part of the consideration for this application, uh, but we have no objection to those changes. Uh, the trash enclosure, similarly, it contemplates a future action that's not presently before the board, uh, namely the, the reuse of a porch, of a, of a large area of the building, which is in part what prompted the original application for this. Uh, there is a note on the site plan requiring the applicant to come back when that occurs, so we suggest that, uh, the, that elimination of the trash enclosure uh, that was previously required for that space, um, is, it may be premature. Uh, we suggested to, to the board and to the applicant that it could be, it is a proposed condition, uh, but it was to be provided for that, it was an improvement to keep it and improve it for that space. So we suggest it could just be phased, um, as a future, as, as a, phased for the future so that the applicant doesn't have to build it for nothing. And then when the applicant comes forward with a vacancy, then they can either, depending on who that is, which is in the future, we don't know, they can either go with it as planned, um, or propose eliminating it at that time. And we've provided, we've provided, uh, resolutions for a condition approval, depending upon your, uh, discussion.
Alright, thanks, Eric. Yeah, I think that's, that might be a good plan to, uh, I mean, you don't build it, don't build it if you don't need it, but you may need it later.
We agree with that.
Okay, great. I, Andy, anything?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, I'm gonna start with the dumpster issue. Um, I understand the, you know, not wanting to build the enclosure for the, um, for the Bosse's facility. I was a little unclear where the dumpster was that was being used by the, by the applicant. And it's not clear to me if that particular location has an enclosure for the dumpsters. Um, and if so, it probably should be provided.
Yeah, I don't think it did.
So that's, that's, that's the first comment. And then also, um, with respect to the, um, the silos, the detail that was provided for the foundation seems to indicate that it will be an elevated foundation, um, up to four feet in height. Uh, presumably because that part of the site is within the floodplain to, to get that structure out of the, you know, any potential high water situations, which is fine. Uh, you know, but of course it raises the, the height, um, variance issue. But also the site plan shows a fence around the base of the structures, which we requested, um, but it also shows a gate, um, where, uh, to the side of the, of the, the structures, which I'm curious how that would be accessible if the structure was not at grade.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Thanks, Andy. Sounds like Kelly's soaking that in there.
Yes, um, neither's notes.
Alright, uh, move we open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Anyone on the call wish to comment on this project at 900 Duchess Turnpike? Looking for raised hands now. Not seeing any. I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Alright, let's go around the board for comments, Peter?
Uh, we've seen this before, I mean, there's, I'm, I'm fine with this, what they're proposing.
Ben?
Yeah, when this started, I asked about extruding plastic and they said no, but now there's gonna be silos and it will be. What kind of emissions will it be with this process? And will any of the waste be just put in the dumpsters?
So, there's no, um, difference in the process that they're utilizing at the site now versus before. Um, the resin is brought into the site now, it's in boxes and it's extruded into the process. Um, this is simply just an alter, uh, an alternative storage system for them, so there is no deviation and no change to the process. And there's no emissions, um, there's no changes to the manufacturing that's being proposed. It's, uh, you know, the development of this bubble wrap. There's no emissions and there's no permitting that's required for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Nicole?
Yeah, I'm just gonna reiterate, uh, what the water department had stated about backflow prevention is due for this particular, um, location. So if you guys could just get it done and then, um, give the certification to the department, that'd be great.
Absolutely, I did not know that, that was outstanding. We just went through a TCO process and I wasn't aware that that was outstanding.
Yeah.
We'll get it taken care of.
Thank you.
And, uh, nothing, thank you, Steve.
Uh, no comment.
Alright, that leaves me. I have a question on, uh, you know, filling the silos, like how often are these trucks needed to come in to fill those silos? Do you know?
It's, um, one, depending upon the size of the truck, one to two times a week.
Okay. So you just have, I'm just curious, how do you fill the silo, cause it's a, but.
I, I'm not sure how the material goes from the delivery truck into the silo. I can find out, but I, I'm not 100% sure how that's offloaded.
I would think a tube or something.
Yeah, some kind of tube.
It's probably like a, like a feed truck.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Something similar, they're just little pellets from what we understand, so that's.
Yes, yes.
Alright, and, uh, I, you know, like, I agree with Andy that, you know, trash enclosure is probably a good idea where.
I figured everyone would catch that.
For the trash that they use.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Alright.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the 900 Duchess Turnpike AP packaging site plan application subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and correctness included but not limited to the following, 1 through 14.
Should I go? Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much, everyone. It was a pleasure to be with, for this board, so I appreciate it.
Thanks, Kelly.
Take care, Kelly.
Have a good night.
You say that to all the boards.
No, I really don't. I don't say to the other boards what I wanna say.
Alright, have a good night, unless you're on for something else, let's see. Next up is, uh, Verizon Wireless. Who's on for this one?
Hi, good evening, my name is Scott Olson. I, uh, I represent Verizon Wireless and I, uh, I'm from a law firm in Young Summit in Albany, New York. So, we're here tonight for a site plan approval for a, what we call a small cell project and, um, I know that this board is, this is not the first time you've seen us with these types of projects. This is probably the third time in the last couple of years or so. Uh, what we're looking to do is, we're looking to install a small cell antenna facility on an existing, uh, the roof of an existing building located at 11, um, uh, what was it, 11th Avenue? And specifically, it's gonna be on the top of the penthouse. We, um, we have a small amount of equipment that we typically install on the roof, I'm sorry, on the side wall of the penthouse, that occupies about 24 square feet or so. Um, it's the equipment that we need, that's the brains of our small cell antennas. Uh, because the property is located in the Arlington, um, Town Center zoning district and that does not allow these types of facilities, we needed a zoning use variance from the ZBA, which we obtained, uh, back on January 10 of this year. So we're here today, I guess, for site plan review and for architectural review. We did, as part of our discussions, uh, agreed to paint the antenna, uh, structure to match the exterior of the building, that's something that the ZBA and its consultant thought was relatively important, uh, so we were happy to do that. Um, the reason we need this site specifically is because the site that is right now at the town hall, where the planning board is currently at, the, that, um, flagpole, it is completely capacity exhausted. It doesn't have any more, uh, any more ability to, um, to allow for more, more users and right now, um, the site is, in many cases, well above 100% capacity. So, and the reason that it's out of capacity is because the users of the network in this area that we're, um, proposing the site to be located in, it's drawing the capacity down. It's, you know, it's trying to connect to that, uh, flagpole facility and there are just too many users doing that, so the RF engineers for Verizon Wireless decided that, um, this location would be optimal for, um, a new facility that would provide, uh, increased capacity so that the, our East Poughkeepsie site, that's what the town hall site is called, can operate, uh, properly and below its maximum capacity. Because otherwise, people are dropping calls, people are not connecting to calls, um, it's creating just a massive headache for us. And I think the one other thing I would just add is that we do provide a. And I think the one other thing I would just add is that we do provide a engineer's certificate from a New York state licensed engineer, which confirms that this facility will be in full compliance with the FCC emission requirements. That, again, is in exhibit six of our application. So happy to entertain any questions. And we do have other people here. We do have Verizon's RF engineer, Ron Evans, he's with us. Brian Sarchi from Aerosmith Development is also with us still. So if there are any questions specific about the site or the technology, I'm sure that they would be happy to answer your questions.
Yep. I just want to confirm one thing right off. This is not for 5G at this time?
Correct. This is, this is just capacity for the 4G LTE network that we have in place.
Okay, so still the lower, the lower frequencies.
Correct.
All right. Got to get those Vassar students to stop watching movies and, and do study. Get them to, a lot of streaming going on, I guess, these days, a lot of data. Start with Kristen, I guess.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, so the applicant is on for a secret review, site plan review and architectural review. As the applicant noted, they did receive their use variance from the ZBA on January tenth, 2022. I have prepared a, a draft negative declaration for your secret review for an unlisted action subject to an uncoordinated review, if, if the board finds it appropriate to act on secret this evening. Just a couple of things to point out. As was mentioned, there were notes provided by the RF engineer that was retained by the town's ZBA to conduct a review of RF emissions and all of that as part of their use variance review. There were a couple of notes, one about the architecture, of course. Again, second, pointing out and reiterating that this is, 5G services are not proposed as part of this application. The, the architectural or aesthetics, there's a sample on page fifteen. I'm not sure if that was something that the planning board was interested in. Again, that was included in the HDR memo that was provided. And then I also just wanted to, to note that it is on for public hearing and a secret resolution has been drafted. And staff is recommending granting conditional site plan approval if the board sees fit and acting on architectural review. But in your draft negative declaration, I did want to point out language that was utilized as part of the ZBA review. And I think I'll just go ahead and read it right into the record that although aware, although the planning board is aware that there is a concern in the community about the potential harmful effects on human health from radio frequency or RF, the planning board is constrained by federal law, which prohibits the board from taking any such potential harmful effects into consideration when making its determination. And the town's consultant has confirmed the applicant's assertion that the resulting RF will be below the FCC's general public maximum permissible exposure limit and thus in compliance with the FCC guidance, which is binding upon the planning board. So with that, I will turn it over, back over to you.
Thanks. I was glad to hear a consultant had looked into that issue. Andy, anything?
Oh, nothing for me to add.
All right. Yeah, it's on for a public hearing, so I move, we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Anyone on the meeting tonight wish to comment on this application?
Yes, I would.
Who's that? Say your name and, and do your three minutes.
This is Michelle.
Okay.
This is Michelle.
Okay, remember we have three minutes.
This is Michelle and a member of the town of Poughkeepsie here. And good evening, chair and members of the planning board. I think that you guys are the last line of defense when it comes to allowing a hazard into our community. Whether the FCC is going to guide those levels or not, there have been no measuring of what's already ambient, what's already in our town. The Verizon application for the small wireless telecommunications facility at Raymond Avenue, nine eleven Raymond Avenue is deficient. And it has misspelling of the company name in the affidavit signed by the attorney for Verizon. There's no insurance, especially without a pollution exclusion. There's no workers' comp, there's no escrow nor proper bonding that my FOIL request yielded. If these documents exist, they appear to be missing from my FOIL request. And that's, that's a real problem, okay? If Verizon is willing to stand behind the safety of its signal, according to the FCC, then there should be no problem with having a pollution inclusion in their insurance information. But they can't and they won't. In addition, without pressure, proper measurements of pre-existing levels of RF microwave radiation in the area of the proposed small wireless telecommunications facility, no one can be assured that adding even more frequency to our ATC is safe. Missing, there appears to be nothing from Verizon or its site developer in writing that affirms that the specific frequency the facility equipment will be using and emitting is indeed lawful. So the specific equipment that will be emitting signal is indeed lawful. And we need to understand the frequency and the power levels of that equipment. And, and so far as my point of view is, we also need to know its capacity, just in case there's a little error. There are errors involved where oops, oh my goodness, now you have 5G, we didn't know it. And to be frank, if no one's going to be monitoring this equipment on an ongoing basis to make sure that we're not being delivered signals that is above and beyond what we agreed to, that in itself is a problem. So there's no one monitoring that. And, you know, I, I really have big issue where there appears to be false statement representation, incorrect, inaccurate and incomplete information on this, on this application. Tim and the, and the planning department should reject this Verizon application based on recommendations from HDR in their tech memo. Page sixteen of sixteen, the town should review the applicant's insurance and workers' comp, submittals, contractor licenses and applicable for the construction work, removal performance, removal bond, fees and escrows associated with the project to verify they are adequate. So again, the insurance will include a radiation pollution exclusion clause and this will never be adequate. Therefore, the application should be rejected for lack of appropriate insurance as HDR advised the town to confirm. So the, the lack of removal bond, escrows associated with the project as HDR had been given to confirm.
Three minutes are up now.
Listen, I, I...
We received, we received your letter also.
No, the, the public does not know that this application is incomplete and there are so many errors and weaknesses and it would appear our own RF engineer is using data, safety data supplied by the applicant's vendor. That is a huge conflict of interest right there. And it's not doing a, you know, our town a service. It's doing us a disservice.
That's why, that's why the ZBA had a consultant looking over. So I think, think, and as, as she said, we have no purview over the, over doing it. And they're, they're listing that as 4G, 4G frequencies, so that's lower than the 5G that you're concerned about as well.
There, there is no documentation in the application that states this is the frequency that's going to be used and this is the equipment and these, this is the capacity of the equipment. And there's no one that's going to be monitoring this in time. And you see what's going on on West Horts Street in New York City. You have something called a mystery illness in which people are becoming sickened. And then when people come in, by, building biologists come in and measure their apartments for what's inside their apartments being broadcasted at them. It is so unhealthy that people cannot, they cannot sleep, they have arrhythmias, they have high blood pressure.
All right, Michelle, that doesn't apply to this particular application because that's in New York City and it's probably 5G. And, you know, we just have to, you know, we'll, we'll try to address some of your comments as we go around the board for, for comments. So thanks for your input.
My name is Lizzy Rubenstein. I'm, I'm also a local resident in Poughkeepsie. And you guys are not doing, you're not doing your due diligence where our health is concerned. I know you're following federal guidelines, which are antiquated and have not kept up with the new technologies. And the measurements in the area that were, they're installing this antenna, the measurements have not adequately measured the, the other antennas that are putting out radiation. You're not, you're not getting a look at the whole picture of the radiation coverage in that area. And additional radiation like this will sicken the, the residents of the area. Unfortunately, the responsibility lies on you because Verizon is not responsible for the results. Verizon is not going to manage the, the, this area. The, the town will. And that is going to put the operational requirements on you guys. And when the people start getting sick, it's the town that's going to be responsible, not Verizon. And it's, it only occurs because people representing us now are not doing their due diligence. I admire the work that you've done when it comes to crosswalks and pedestrian pathways and, and signage because these are standard zoning issues that you're familiar with. But what we're dealing with now is new technology and the regulations have not caught up to the needs of our health. And if you look the other way, in spite of the fact that you're being warned that there are issues that need to be looked at and you're not doing the due diligence but passing it off the same way you have, your hands are tied because federal regulations say so, that, that is doing not only a disservice, but it is hurting the citizens that you're, you're, you're here to protect. And I'm, I'm not accusing you of doing any of this intentionally, but you're certainly shirking your responsibilities because it's not a typical standard crosswalk issue or, or a signage issue, things that you're familiar with. This is new technology and it requires very careful application before you just willy-nilly go, well, the federal government says it's okay, so therefore it's okay. Because it's really not okay. People are getting sick from this and they're going to get more sick. This is not good.
Thanks for your comments.
The actual TCA Act of nineteen ninety-six, the ultimate version, does give authority to the municipalities for operations, for the operations of the equipment. It's not Verizon's responsibility for operations of the equipment. And that's where our town is going to be stuck with liability and holding the bag. So if, if our attorneys have not looked at this, like, this is a big problem. And if they're just listening to the telecom attorneys saying, oh no, you can't do anything about this because it's, you know, local public safety, you can't say anything about this. This is so wrong. You can control less than, for God's sake. And you can't, I'm sorry, it is wrong and it is not the correct interpretation.
And we've heard, heard from both you guys. Is there anyone else which is to speak? All right, this time then I, I move, we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Let's go to, around the board for comments. Anything from you, Ben?
No comment.
Peter?
The only comment that I have is I, you know, I don't like the fact that our, really our hands are tied.
Yep.
You know, by federal, by state legislation, by federal legislation, you know, we're pretty much... That's my only comment.
If I may just respond to that quickly, I'm sorry for interrupting. It's not so much that your hands are tied. I mean, the reason it's done this way is because, and I, I believe that the two commentators truly believe what they're saying. It's just not correct or accurate. And the fact is that the signals that are used, these radio signals, and that's what they are, radio signals, are so low powered that the FCC, when it was looking at this, said there are no situations where people are going to fall ill or get sick when these facilities are installed properly. And part of the proper installation means we have a licensed engineer look at the RF emissions. And, and that's, that's basically why, I mean, the hands are tied. I, I hear what you're saying, but...
Okay, appreciate, appreciate your, appreciate your comments.
I understand, if I were in your position, I would look at it differently too. Doesn't change the fact that our hands are tied.
Okay.
I mean, right now, I mean, we, we hired a consultant to try, to try to look at this to make sure that they're staying within their required frequency ranges. Nicole, anything?
No, I don't, I don't really have any comments. You know, we're not, this isn't 5G. So I think 5G is a little different as far as that's concerned. But yeah, I, I don't really have any comments.
Rocco?
No comment.
Steve?
No comment.
All right. ZB, the ZBA approved this already and with their consultant and 5G is not included. And you are planning to paint to match the building. Do you, do you have a comment on what the frequency actually is, the applicant?
Yeah, we, we've provided the information in, in the application. And the frequency that we are using, seven hundred megahertz, but also twenty-one megahertz.
Okay.
Ron, I don't know if there's another, I don't know if it's CBRS is being used here or not. I honestly don't know.
It's actually twenty-one hundred megahertz, which is the AWS spectrum. The PCS spectrum is nineteen hundred megahertz. And an added spectrum is CBRS, which is thirty-five fifties to thirty-seven hundred megahertz.
Okay.
So those are the three spectrums of licenses that we are utilizing at this facility.
For the 4G LTE.
Yeah, correct.
I mean, I will note that, you know, years ago, the, the power levels of, of cell phones were, were higher and they actually changed to lower the power levels of phones in general, as well as the transmission towers. And that's why more towers are needed to be added to infill the previously big towers. And as technology changes with data as well, more capacity has been needed. So that's my two cents. Give it, move ahead.
I move the planning board determine that the proposed Verizon Wireless Communications Facility would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded for secret, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for Verizon Wireless microcommunications facility subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. A said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of and not limited to the following ones through nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And we're ready to see some, can you share your screen with the architectural rendering?
I'm sorry, I... Am I, are you asking me to?
Yes, we have to do architectural review.
Yep.
And you mentioned the paint matching, but we want to see what the elevations look like.
I will show you that right now. I am sorry, I'm having some difficulties here. I apologize. I am using a different computer tonight. I see the shared screen.
Not popping up, huh? Let me, we have it in the packets too. We can, let's see, what section is it in on the packets? I don't remember. In the HDR's report, there was, they had provided copies of that on pages twelve and thirteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if Brian was trying to say something.
Yeah, I was, I was saying I can pull it up if necessary.
Don't be great, Brian.
Absolutely.
I'm having a difficult, I apologize.
Yeah, we're finding our packets as well.
Yeah, Brian, you can pull up the site plans, that should help the elevation view. But as someone just said, the HDR report, if you have it in front of you, page 12 has some actual photographs of the simulations that we did.
Those simulations, do you guys see, do you see that right now?
Yep. Thanks for sharing. And then there was another view as well.
So the one thing that that doesn't show you though is, you know, if you see the, it's a brick facade it looks like, or darker color, that the antenna that you see is not actually painted in that simulation because the comment came up after the simulations were done. I always tell the boards, again, it's just my personal preference. I think I told the ZBA this. If you look at this, the structure, the way it is now in kind of an off-white structure, to me blends in more. But the ZBA and the HDR said, consider, you know, painting that brown, you know, that's more, it's up to you. I think it stands out a little more, but.
It may make it stand out more, actually.
But we're happy to paint it also. That's fine. The antenna.
Is that, what's the, it's a, what's the diameter of the antenna?
Ron, do you know the diameter?
Sure, it's approximately 12 inches. I have the actual drawings up. I could give you that.
Thank you.
I don't recall if the ZBA required it to be painted or deferred to the planning board as to painting. I'd have to go back and look at the actual decision. One of the things they did think was that what was on the side of the building should be painted to match the building. I don't remember, as I sit here, whether they talked about what went above the building and whether.
The actual canister itself.
Right. So obviously I wouldn't want this board to go against what the ZBA said, but if you have a recommendation otherwise.
But I, personally, I think, you know, I just look at a picture of the Fox Run, for example, that's on the lighter side. It blends into the sky, especially when it's cloudy, more than a brown would, I think. Or this is like a reddish brown, the building, so that might make the canister stand out more than.
Would you like us to take a look at exactly what the ZBA allowed, didn't allow, and then let us to, based on that, you know, make a final determination with them?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. It would want to be consistent, whatever, whatever decision they made.
If they, if they're allowing us to choose, I, my preference is to leave grayish, unpainted.
Yeah, because it blends better into the background.
Unless any of you guys have other comments on that. That's my two cents. So let's do it that way. If the ZBA required it to be painted, then it will have to be painted. We'll abide by their decision, but I think it should not be. So go ahead with, oh. Did I go around the board? Yeah.
Yeah, we already did the vote on the conditional, we're just on architectural.
Yep, so it's just architectural. And the, so I move, we accept architecture as presented with the condition that we look at the ZBA for whether it's painted or not.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much.
All right, take care.
You too, thank you.
Next stop is 511 Height Avenue. Who's on representing that new project tonight?
Hi, good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name's Phoebe Douglas. I'm a civil engineer, working alongside Lucy McGuire, who's also on the call. She's a licensed professional engineer. We're going to be presenting the application submitted by the owners of Morgan's Forest, located on 511 Height Avenue in the Arlington Town Center Zone District. And they're proposing to remove an existing hot tub, demolish an existing shed, and install five new parking spaces, as well as two ADA parking spaces. So I just want to give a little bit of a background. So Morgan's Forest, Morgan's Forest has been around for generations. And initially they had street parking prior to the arterial being constructed in the late 1970s.
Ah, that's a good point.
Once that was constructed, the, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you say something?
I was just saying, it's good to know that history because we were wondering how that got ever approved without parking.
Yeah. So, yes, so prior to the arterial being constructed, they had street parking to facilitate, to service their business. And once that was taken away, they became essentially landlocked. And so their patrons have been using parking from the neighboring business, which is Davies Hardware, through a mutual agreement. So currently the owners are looking to sell the business and property. And they've had two failed deals because essential buyers want assurance that the land will come with parking. So here we are. So Stephen Diane Morgan, who are the owners of this shop, have discussed with the owners of Davies Hardware, either to purchase part of their property or to obtain a permanent easement for the parking so they'll be able to sell their property along with parking as the buyers are desiring. Unfortunately, those discussions did not advance. However, Davies Hardware has granted, has given an easement to Morgan's Forest as grantee ingress and egress over the lands of the grantor to access the property at 511 Height Avenue. There's also a 26-foot travel right-of-way, as you've seen on the plans, over Davies Hardware, providing ingress and egress access to Height Avenue. So as a result of the history and the access rights, we're here seeking approval for our application to provide onsite parking for the business and the dwelling units that are upstairs. So I can share my screen to show you pretty much what's existing out there. Can everyone see okay?
Yep.
All right, so this is an aerial view of the property. So what's existing is a hot tub here and then a shed, as described earlier. And then this is the shared parking that they've been using to, for patrons to come to the Forest Shop. So what we're proposing is, let me see. So what we've proposed is to convert those four spaces on the side to be the ADA parking spaces, since the entryway is located on the side. And then add five additional spaces in the back, remove the existing shed and the hot tub, and create more of a vegetary, a vegetated area in its place, just to facilitate more parking, given the constraints of the area for this business. So I'm not sure if anyone, you know, that's pretty much our spiel. So I'm not sure if anyone has questions.
Thanks, Phoebe. We'll go through, if you have any questions, as we go through it.
Okay.
Krista?
Thank you, Phoebe, for the overview. I think that helps paint a pretty clear picture. So the application's on for a secret review and site plan review. We've designated this as an unlisted action, subject to an uncoordinated review. There are a number of elements that we highlighted as needing to be included in a, in a future submission. Just as recent as this afternoon, town staff and council met with the applicant over Zoom to discuss some of the, the legal components that will have to be assured and compiled and remitted to the town for further review. And some of those items include the access from Height Avenue. I call it Hate Avenue. I guess I've been saying it, I've been saying it wrong. Oh, it is Hate, okay. Hate Avenue, I don't know. Hate Avenue and, and just the access to the parking that would be proposed at the north side of this building. And, and that said, we need to get some confirmation on the square footage for the commercial space and confirm with our zoning administrator the required number of park, or parking spaces for that space. A variance may need to be sought. But again, there are a number of legal components and instruments that would need to either be drawn up or flushed out or compiled or, you know, any of those words. But having to do with access from Height Avenue, but also because there is an existing parking agreement in place with Davies.
Right.
But it's, it's not a permanent document. It's not a permanent agreement. So at any point of Davies' were to sell, that, that access goes away. It's not guaranteed or assured. So the town planning board can't really grant an approval without those agreements in place. I'm probably butchering this, but.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds about right.
So we're looking for some assurance in that department. And that was discussed as recent as this afternoon. So at this point in time, although you did have an either-or option set up in your recommendation, staff is recommending that you open the public hearing, adjourn the public hearing, and then defer action with comments. And, and the applicant was made aware of this, so they would be able to take any comments heard this evening into account, in addition to taking the time to perhaps work through those legal components.
Okay. Any comments on those legal components yet? Jim?
Am I still Jim? Hold on. I switched it before I got up. Is that better? The short answer is no. There's a couple of things that are not clear from the documents and there's a couple of inconsistencies. So for example, there's an easement for access only. It's, and it says no structures, but it, there's then a separate document which says it's meant to allow the existing deck to remain. So either it can be access or you can have a deck, but you can't have both. And then the other, there's no document that actually creates the right-of-way. There's no document which talks about a right-of-way. But that may be the easement. So, but that's not so. There's just a number of.
Yeah, you have to get there from the.
Right. And then if it, if the easement, if the right-of-way is the access and then the intermittent revocable parking goes away, then they still don't have access to their property. So there's just a number of little nits like that that lawyers love to find. So.
Yep, okay. Sounds a.
And one of the others that the applicant's aware of is the way they've redesigned the ADA parking, it extends into the right-of-way. And I don't know that that's going to be, I haven't seen a document that allows that to happen.
I was going to note that, so it's like, the easement itself or the right-of-way.
So we may be able to get clarification. There's some indication from the applicant's attorney that they work relatively well with the attorney for Davies Hardware other than not being able to get a permanent easement for the parking. So it may be that we'll have those documents resolved prior to the next submission.
We'll work it out.
Hi, Lisa. I just wanted to point it out, point out that, you know, we, we understand that those, the two ADA spots do encroach into that right-of-way. But considering that there's four existing spots there, we figure that, you know, there may be some sort of variance that could be granted because the existing conditions have four existing spots in that location. Where, in essence, we're changing it to two. And it's right, it's adjacent to the existing entrance to the flower shop. So that, to give you a little bit more background on that.
If the, in order for the ZBA to consider being able to grant a variance for that, those parking spaces, they would need to see a document that actually allows them. Just be, we have a number of things in the town that exist and are not actually authorized. So we would need to see some legal basis for having those, the parking extend into the right-of-way.
Understood.
All right. Think that's enough legalese for right now. Andy, do you have anything?
No, I think everything, all my concerns have already been mentioned. You know, my primary concern was the parking spaces and how that might obstruct access to the, to the, to the maneuvering aisle for the rest of the site. But I think the legal, legal issues need to be resolved first.
Okay, thanks.
I think it might even be beneficial too, though, for the board to comment on the fact, I mean, of course, we understand that there's, there are a number of items that are in play here. But the, the proposal itself for putting the parking at the rear of the structure or the north side of the structure, I mean, does the board have any particular qualms about that? And I'm only asking just for the benefit of the applicant since they did join us. And, you know, if, if it were to be legalized, you know, if there are comments, I don't want to just sort of overlook that because then they could take the application wholly back and reevaluate it and, and really take a hard look at the proposal.
I mean, that's, you know, that's the only place to put it on their parcel.
Yeah.
Other than, other than working out something with Davies to keep it, you know, for buying piece, which doesn't sound like it's happening, so.
Yeah, the, the other, the other concern that I just wanted is, there's an aisle, there's a little island in the middle of those two parking lots. And putting ADA spaces this way, I really want to make sure it's checked that there's enough clearance there. Because you're now changing the direction of them and it's very close to the, the street where it narrows. I just happened to drive through there. I noticed how it narrows when you go try to get access to eight. So I would be concerned with the location of the ADA spots.
All right, before we get too much into this, let's get to, let me open the public hearing. Move, move to open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Anyone on the call wish to comment on this project at 511 Height, Height Avenue, Height Avenue? Can't wait to get it straight.
There's not a lot of people left on the call and not seeing anyone.
So at this point, I move we adjourn the public hearing to April 21st, 2022.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, let's go around the board. As long as you were starting, Steve, do you have anything else?
I have a comment.
Hey, Rocco?
Two things. One is, I noticed, and this is for clarification, there appears to be a staircase that goes down from the roof area between the building and where the future parking lot, parking spaces will, will be, is that, is that truly a staircase? Okay, so that's a fire escape?
It leads up to a deck there, I believe, so.
Oh, is that, okay, that was the deck you guys were talking about?
It's not, it's, it's a, it's a staircase that accesses the two residences upstairs.
Okay, so that is a fire escape?
In fact, yes.
Okay, so we've got to make sure that there's nothing blocking that. The other question I have is that assuming all the legal arguments get worked out here, those five spaces that will be on Morgan's property, who will, I assume that they'll be responsible both for snow removal and for maintenance? And will they need an agreement with Davies to allow equipment on there to take care of that maintenance aspect of it?
No, because that, that would be a, a snow blower or shovel because it's, it's, it's very small area.
Well, okay, but the snow will have to go someplace.
Right, right, well, yes, exactly. But with a snow blower, we'd be able to direct all of the snow removal back into the area.
To the lawn area.
Right, so that means then you're going to have to get agreement with the new owners to do that. I mean, that's, this is my point, is that who's going to?
So there's, there's a grass area, there's a grass area adjacent to where this proposed parking would go. But certainly we would just have them demonstrate the snow storage on the site plan and if, as a future, with a future submission. And just so you're aware, the folks that are talking are Diane and Stephen Morgan. That's who Diane's iPad is, just so you know.
Right, okay. All right, well, I figured that, but I just was curious on who, who would maintain that and how would they have it maintained, et cetera.
And just to piggy.
It does butt up, but the Davies's property there, Davies property, excuse me.
Right. And just to piggyback off of the Morgans, we did actually increase the veget. um, we did actually increase the vegetated area, um, that would, um, facilitate the storage of the snow once it's cleared. So by the removal of that shed and the, um, the hot tub, um, it increased the, um, vegetated area. So, um, that, that could be another thought to, um, answer your question.
Okay, I mean, as long as they can get the equipment they need there to get it done, because they're still landlocked.
Well, it's the same, it's the same access issue as there is for getting cars there. So if we can resolve the cars getting there, then it's the same, then it's the same issue.
Everything, yeah. That's what I'm thinking. I don't know if that has to be added in there specifically or not.
I'm not sure if it has to be, but...
Well, well, it was...
I mean, there's no storage. All right, thanks, Rocco. Um, Steve, let's see, how was Steve? Go on this one, your call.
This one. Um, hi, Morgans, by the way. Um, we're...
Hello?
We're, we're, we're definitely gonna miss you. My family's been using you guys forever.
Yes.
Um, I, you know, I don't really have any comments. The only thing that I, I wanted to reiterate, the water department had stated that your backflow prevention is due, and that's something that you'll have to get tested.
We're...
You didn't already, okay, all right, so that...
Yeah, 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 done on February, um, tenth, I think it was.
Okay.
Super, super.
All right, so that might have been a comment. All right, thanks. I really have nothing else.
Okay.
Okay.
Ben?
Nothing.
And Peter? All right, yeah, nothing to me, as long as we can work out those legal agreements, I think. Oh, I did have one more comment. There's a utility pole right in the middle of, of the, where the tree is.
Right.
Not sure...
That is a, um, uh, the utility pole is a, um, uh, what it's, uh, uh... All it is, is a, um, uh, a pole that holds up the other utility pole. So it's, um, but it, it doesn't belong to us. Central Hudson put it in there to, um, be a pole that, uh, it is like a board for the one that, that Avenue.
A guy wire, okay.
Guy wire, yes, that's it.
So we need to, uh, have Central Hudson take a look at that through, to change their location of their guy wire and move it.
Right. We did propose a new location for it, um, uh, but to facilitate conversations, um, on the proposed plan, just to facilitate the conversation about moving it.
Yep, sounds good. Thanks, Phoebe. All right, that's all I have for now then.
Okay. I move the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following one through ten.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, uh, six to zero. All right, thanks, good luck with getting those legal easements worked out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there this late. We've got, uh, a couple more items here. Arlington Farms is the next on the agenda. I move we adjourn that to March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. And Stewart Shops at twenty-two forty-five South Road. I move that we adjourn the public hearing to March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. At this time, I move to allow public comment on other items on tonight's agenda. And please limit the comments to no more than three minutes, as usual, and we will consider them during this portion of the meeting.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Anyone wish to comment on the remaining item on tonight's, the main two items on tonight's agenda? Seeing that, I move, we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, next up is Ford Bauer Road, minor subdivision. Who's here representing that, if you're still out there?
I'm here, representing my, uh, engineer, Eric Marsh, top of my...
Okay, ah, okay, so you're Mr. Needers then, I guess.
Yes.
Thanks for joining us.
Just wanted to keep you guys company.
It's a lot of fun, right? Ernie, you're mo- uh, muted. Can you, uh, unmute yourself there?
Looked like what you're doing made sense, first, uh, based on what's, all the wellings there.
He said he was on standby an hour ago.
Or you wanna just say briefly what...
He said you got this.
You can say briefly what you're doing, and then Kristen can summarize it. Just doing the subdivision, right, so, Kristen, you wanna...
Sure.
Go ahead.
I mean, it's, it's up to you.
All right, there he is.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you. Okay, good.
Okay, Ernie, excuse me, uh, Ernie Martin here. Uh, Sean Gotchak, um, I believe is in the audience?
Yeah, I'm here, Ernie.
Okay, good. Uh, yeah, very simply, it's about fifty-seven acres, and we're doing a two-lot subdivision. Uh, one parcel, the small parcel's about, uh, a little over six acres, and the remaining is the fifty-point-one acres, I believe. Um, Sean is looking to, as the applicant is looking to subdivide this parcel and then purchase the approved lot and to build on it for himself.
All right, sounds pretty straightforward.
Um, a couple of things. We've, uh, we've done our soil test, um, in the presence of the health department. Um, the soils were acceptable for a subsurface system we will be submitting to the health department. Um, the, uh, the surveyor of record is Mike Dalbo from Height Park. Um, and he actually worked, and he was actually the surveyor of record on this parcel some years back. And, uh, we simply just, uh, you took the existing, um, wetland delineation, and we added that to our map. It's not a new delineation, but in reading the, um, the comments from the, uh, the wetland consultant, um, typically, if we were doing something either in the buffer, the adjacent area, or the wetland, obviously we would need to, um, to reflag the wetlands, but I think in this case, I don't think it's necessary. We would hope the board would think the same thing.
All right, we'll see what, uh, department recommends. Kristen?
Okay, thank you for the overview. So yes, the application's on for secret review and preliminary subdivision review for a minor subdivision. Uh, we're looking to create two lots out of one lot, um, to be served by public water and private sewer. Um, as Ernie mentioned, uh, yes, uh, coordination with, um, Deftis County Department of Health will be required. Uh, they did provide, uh, comments to that effect, um, which are included in your packet. Um, staff has, uh, outlined just a, a number of things, just to clean up the, the plan or the plat a little bit, uh, and then there's just a, a host of town code language regarding, uh, minor subdivision, uh, approval, pro- review and process, um, for approval. Um, so at this point, uh, I would be recommending deferral on the, on the, uh, deferring further action with comments, um, and just, uh, if the board had any questions or concerns at this time, it would be the time to get them in. Um, in all likelihood, we would be able to get them on for a public hearing at their next appearance, um, and proceed accordingly. Um, Carol Knapp is on the line. She did take, uh, a look at this, um, and could speak to that effect of her reviews, um, or her review memo, and then also Andy Lauren.
All right, thanks, Kristen. Um, yeah, there's some of the wetlands out there. I, as I was looking at the project, I saw a nice, uh, set of, I think it's eagles' nests or whatever, and every whole bunch of trees behind it, along Bauer Road there, so... Let Carol speak to, next, to what, uh, she thinks about the wetland area.
Actually, um, the project has proposed the, uh, division of a six-point-four acre lot from the overall parcel. Um, I have no issues with that. It, uh, there's a significant amount of wetlands on the site, but the location of the, um, the proposed septic and the house and the driveway, oh, well, what, outside of the buffers, the hundred-foot buffer for the state. Um, so should anything else change? Should additional development be required, or should anything happen with the rest of the parcel? They, we, we would need another delineation, but this, I'm, I'm, I'm good with.
Okay, thanks, Carol. Thanks for hanging in there. Andy?
Uh, not a whole lot for me to comment on. Um, of course, we're gonna be looking for health department approval of, of the septic system for the new lot, um, looking for some, some information on how the, the driveway will be constructed, um, to the new house location. Um, some water service details, and then, um, that's about it. You know, some consideration, um, uh, of some, some sort of a barrier, um, along the wetland buffer outline, um, to kind of preserve that area, um, in the future. Otherwise, that's, that's about it.
All right, thanks, Andy. Uh, let's go around the board for comments. Peter?
Uh, just one question. The, the map that I have, the sketch plan, showing Lot Six B, where's the, the access road? Where's the, the driveway? Does it go to Regency or...
Yes, so it's gonna go straight down Regency to a dead-end cul-de-sac, and the road actually continues right to the property line.
There's a Lot Twenty-nine here. Does the, the access, does the driveway go through Lot Twenty-nine to get to Lot Six B?
No, the, the driveway will go directly, uh, to the sub...
It's already paved there, Peter. It's already paved from the cul-de-sac.
On the map that we got, from the cul-de-sac to the, uh...
If you were to extend Regency Row, the driveway would extend directly into the property.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Thank you, yep. It's a, it's a paper road, and it's also a real road. There's actually pavement there now, going right to the property line. Uh, Ben, anything?
No, I have nothing.
Any call?
Uh, I mean, um, Andy pretty much already said it, but, you know, the driveway will have to conform to the New York State twenty-twenty fire code, so...
Rocco?
Uh, no comment, thank you. Uh, no comment.
Same here, looks, looks like we had, uh, one of, one of the only, uh, buildable spots on that, on that property, uh, with, uh, that, so it's good to subdivide it off and use it, and...
Sure.
Good luck. Uh, we'll go through a motion here.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, one through eleven.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, good luck getting the last few things in place on this...
Sounds good, thank you guys very much.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thank you.
And we meet the same time every third Thursday of every month, if you wanna join us. I know you guys work over nights. All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, last stop is the time extension. I don't know if anybody have any questions on Greystone Day, Day Hab? I move that the planning board grant a twelve-month time extension of conditional site plan approvable from April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two forward to April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Any other business before the board tonight?
I move that we end tonight's meeting.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no opposition, okay.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Passed six to zero. Thanks, everyone.